Good afternoon. Before we begin, I'd like everybody to rise please and we'll pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to this afternoon's hearing of the House Labor and Industry Committee on Prevailing Wage. For those of you who may not have noticed, I'm not Mario Scavelo. I look a little different than the chairman. The chairman couldn't be with us this afternoon, so he's asked that I preside over the committee hearing. My name is Fred Keller. I represent the 85th Legislative District, which is Union and Snyder Counties. I want to thank the members and the chairman and our testifiers for joining us this afternoon. This is the third in a series of ongoing meetings of statewide public hearings to discuss the committee's efforts to secure meaningful prevailing wage reform, particularly relating to two proposals that have come before the committee, and they are House Bills 796 and 665. We will be hearing testimony from local county, borough, and township officials, organized labor representatives, and also some people from right here in the city of Johnstown. Prevailing wage is a complex issue and often contentious. Many legislators and stakeholders hold conflicting views regarding the costs and benefits associated with the Prevailing Wage Act. Keeping that in mind, I intend to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard and that the members have an opportunity to question the testifiers as they see fit. I look forward to gathering the valuable input and perspectives from our expert panels, which I hope will illustrate the effects of Prevailing Wage Act at the local level and for the interested parties. For the information of our members and our guests, please be aware that today's hearing is being broadcast live on PAHouseGOP.com and may likely appear on PCN at a later date. I'd like to recognize Chairman Keller for some remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we have done for the past 10 years, we'll have the hearing today on prevailing wage and what I believe are the benefits of it. But first, I'd like to do some housekeeping. I just want to get on the record, I know it doesn't make any difference, we have a ruling from the parliamentarian, but I believe this hearing is still in violation of Rule 50 because I have received from the chairman a letter saying that we have changed from the two bills to a subject matter. But as I read Rule 50, you have to receive that either from the speaker or from the majority leader, and I have not seen or do not have in my possession any letter from the speaker or the majority leader. I'm just making a point, I'm just getting it on the record. I know we're going forward. And the second thing I'd like to bring up is one of the things I'm going to be talking about today to the commissioners. I have drafted a bill since we're so concerned that taxpayer money isn't being used in the right way when it comes to paying decent wages to our workers. I have a bill that says we should not put taxpayer money into lobbying, which is the School Board Association, the Township Commissioners Association, the Boroughs Association. We are putting taxpayer money into those associations to lobby. So I think I'll be sending a cosponsorship memo since we're so concerned about how the taxpayer monies are being misused. I'm going to send a cosponsorship memo, and I hope I could get the cooperation of this committee and the chairman and the majority leader when I submit the bill. I have a draft here if anybody's interested. But I think that's much better. We should have hearings on that, and we would correct a lot more and save the townships and boroughs a lot more money if we could bring that to the forefront, instead of worrying about a little bit of money we could save on prevailing wage. So thanks again, Mr. Chairman. We'll have another, which I thought we've had a series of good hearings on this, so maybe we could get something accomplished. But I'm also going to bring up that we shouldn't be using taxpayers' money for people to lobby. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a ruling from the parliamentarian on the subject matter of this hearing, and we feel that we're within the scope of what we should be doing. So we will proceed. I would like to have the members or the panel up here before the public introduce themselves, and we'll start with Representative Lucas.
Greg Lucas, 5th District, Erie and Crawford County.
Bill Keller, 184th District, and it's a little different than the chairman's 185th. We're in South Philadelphia.
Actually, Fred Keller, 85th District, Union and Snyder Counties.
Afternoon. Brian Cutler, 100th District, Southern Lancaster County.
What I'd like to do then is if we could have our first panelists come up, which would be the county commissioners and local government officials? I'd like to recognize Representative Brian Barbin in the audience. Good afternoon, gentlemen. If you could just do a brief introduction and then we can start your testimony.
Doug Langenfelder, President, Commissioner, Cambria County.
I was kind of put in at the last minute this morning, but I believe your agenda shows Bill Smith. My name's Bob Heffelfinger. I'm a Richland Township Supervisor and also the president of the Cambria County Association of Township Officials.
I'm Dan Penitzer, Borough Manager in Evansburg Borough.
You can begin when you're ready, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. I would like to begin by thanking Representative Keller for giving me an opportunity to testify today, and I'll welcome the board to beautiful Cambria County, the energy county. The Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Act was enacted in 1961 with the intention that for local governments, it would apply to a few exceptional large public works projects. However, because the act has not been updated to keep up with inflation, the burdens of the act have grown to encompass the majority of local public works projects. Over time, the prevailing wage tends to create its own inflationary pressure on construction wages. Also, a Commonwealth Court decision, Pennsylvania State Building and Construction Trades Council versus Prevail Wage Appeals Board in 1998, has required that the above-market price prevailing wage be used to set the future prevailing wage. These compounded inflationary pressures will only ensure that the current $25,000 project exception will become more and more meaningless. If the $25,000 threshold is not increased, the large majority of public works projects will be impacted by the prevailing wage mandate. Also, in recent years, in the Borough of Youngwood case, 2008, the Supreme Court virtually eliminated the other important exception in the Prevailing Wage Act, the maintenance exception. If the exception is not restored, virtually every public work project will be subject to the Prevailing Wage Act. As a result, you have the recent flurry of proposals, bills, and amendments to provide common sense exceptions to the Prevailing Wage Act. This flurry of activity is driven by local governments who know that the Prevailing Wage Act is preventing them from providing important services. In today's economic environment, we're all dealing with limited funding. Even in the best of times, we in local government know that our funding sources are limited. Every dollar we spend on an inflated prevailing wage is another dollar we cannot spend on other important projects and services. The needs of our community in Cambria County have been clearly detailed in a recent United Way Community Needs Assessment. This assessment found that the most significant problems facing our families were the poor economy, lack of community resources, and crime. These are issues we in county government would love to devote more resources to if the resources were available. While one can argue that society will always have more needs than resources to meet these needs, the question before us today is how do these needs best get met? What is the most effective and efficient use of taxpayer dollars? The prevailing wage is not an effective or efficient use of taxpayer dollars in Cambria County. It results in paying artificially inflated construction costs with our precious county dollars. In 2011, the Pennsylvania Association of Boroughs published data which showed that the prevailing wage in Cambria County was, on the average, 66% inflated over the standard occupational wage. That 66% represents dollars that were not available to meet other needs. The same study showed that our neighboring rural counties suffered with similarly inflated prevailing wage rates. Approximately six years ago, the State Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, requested that the Cambria County Redevelopment Authority bid three of their substantial housing rehabilitation projects, both with prevailing wage requirements and without prevailing wage requirements. These properties were located in the Kernville neighborhood of the city of Johnstown and were being rehabilitated for sale to low and moderate income families. A substantial rehabilitation project generally involves the replacement of electrical systems, plumbing systems, heating systems, roofing systems, windows, floor coverings, and other building code requirements. Without prevailing wage requirements, the average cost of rehabilitation was $90,000. With prevailing wage requirements, the average cost of rehabilitation increased from $65,000 up to the total then equating to $155,000. With this example, the Redevelopment Authority could have rehabilitated five residential properties without prevailing wage rates and could have only rehabilitated three properties using prevailing wage rates. Since 2006, our small county has completed four bridge maintenance projects. With the required prevailing wage costs, the cost of those projects was almost $2.5 million, or an average of $625,000 per bridge. If we had paid standard occupational wages, those projects could have been completed for just under $2 million, or $500,000 per bridge. The extra $500,000 paid in prevailing wage costs could have been enough to complete another average bridge maintenance project, or that $500,000 could have been used toward economic development, providing community resources, or fighting crime. I personally sit on several boards within Cambria County. One in particular, the Airport Authority, was considering repairing the eroding rip rap at the end of the runway at Johnstown Airport. The authority elected not to complete the project using government grant funding because prevailing wage costs would have more than doubled the cost of the project. Although this may be an extreme case, it demonstrates how burdensome the current test for prevailing wage has become. This burden could be avoided by allowing the economy to determine the cost of doing the business of the people, no different than when housing costs are determined by what the market bears. When labor costs are artificially raised, the overall cost to the taxpayer, the lost opportunities to the needy, and the additional bureaucratic burden placed upon administrators become an ineffective and inefficient use of these dollars. We're discussing the balancing of providing a responsible and reasonable wage for those accomplishing the work of the government and effectively meeting the needs of some of society's most in need. Experience tells us that when we bid public works, they can be completed at less expense if prevailing wages are not required. Additionally, the legislative requirements of complying with the Prevailing Wage Act cause bureaucratic costs of time and effort spent. These expenses do nothing to meet the needs of society's most in need. We should also look at the logic behind having a threshold before prevailing wage enters into the picture. If a threshold was established because the bureaucratic burden associated with this issue was recognized, then why are we being held to 1960's standards? If we're able to provide a greater number of services to the public without creating an undue hardship on business, why do we not elect to do so? Raising the threshold for applying the prevailing wage by solely the rate of inflation would place this threshold somewhere around $190,000 rather than the current threshold of $25,000, a change that would allow administrators to once again accomplish maintenance and repair work without treating these projects as new construction. In conclusion, by allowing a higher threshold and allowing a maintenance exception before applying prevailing wage requirements, local governments will be able to better meet the needs of our communities most needy. We can better use our taxpayers' hard-earned dollars, and we can provide cost savings by reducing unnecessary bureaucratic requirements, one of government's hidden costs affecting not only our ability to provide services, but also a quality of life to our constituents. Thank you for your time today. I wish you Godspeed and strength in your efforts to assist local governments in helping our communities most needy. Thank you.
What I believe we'll do is, just since our agenda says three people at 1:15, we'll let you do the testimony, and then we'll question the three as a panel if you're okay with that, Chairman. So, next testifier, please begin.
Representative Keller, Chairman Keller, and members of the House Labor and Industry Committee. My name is Dan Penitzer. I serve as a Borough Manager in Evansburg Borough here in Cambria County. I have 35 years of experience in local and county government, including 17 years as a professional manager in Evansburg. I want to thank the committee for this opportunity to speak in support of long overdue reforms proposed to the state's prevailing wage law. First, I wish to make it clear that Evansburg Borough is not anti-union. We faithfully bargain with our own uniform and non-uniform employees and consider them to be partners in local governance. They are worth every penny that they are paid, and they deserve each and every benefit that they have bargained for. Because of our mutually respectful relationship with our union employees, we've never had to utilize interest arbitration, and I can't tell you the last time that we even had a grievance filed in Evansburg Borough. We believe that unions are important for labor and that they should and can be an asset to management as well. Further, our position here today is not anti-pervailing wage, nor do we believe the purpose of the proposed legislation to be anti-pervailing wage. We're here simply to strongly support necessary and long overdue updates to an archaic law. It stands to reason that any law that is over 50 years old and references specific dollar amounts will become outdated with time. We wish to speak specifically to two objectives of the proposed legislation, the need to increase the exclusionary threshold and the need to exclude maintenance projects. I ask that you remember too that Evansburg is a small town of less than 4,000 residents, not unlike many of the small towns that you grew up in. Money is tight, the tax base is limited, we're not an entitlement community for CDBG funds. Nearly everything we do, we do on our own, and we do it with our own funds. One of those things that we've been doing over the past decade is an annual sidewalk and curb replacement project, and as I discuss the proposed legislation with you today, I'll refer several times to those sidewalk projects. A local legislator, while commenting on proposed revisions to prevailing wage, said it the prevailing wage levels the playing field in bidding between large and small companies, and I respectfully disagree. Requiring prevailing wage on relatively small projects, for example, those under $100,000, essentially eliminates small companies from the bidding completely. There are many local small companies that are very capable of doing sidewalk and curb projects. There's nothing complicated about that type of work. A small contractor is very capable of performing that work in a professional manner but is not willing to become involved in the paperwork associated with prevailing wage, including the certified payrolls or audit. It has been said that raising the threshold, even just enough to account for inflation on small projects, means that workers' wages will be suppressed. I submit to you that the application of this archaic threshold to these very small projects in fact suppresses the wages of employees of those small businesses. If the owner of that small business declines to even bid on these small projects because of the prevailing wage, then the law as it is today is harmful to those employees of that small business. It's not helpful. The same local legislator argued the prevailing wage keeps dollars in the community, and I would argue the opposite again because the current threshold serves to exclude, again, the smaller local companies from even bidding. Since 2003, Evansburg Borough has undertaken a sidewalk and curb replacement project each year. In 2003, we bid our first sidewalk project where we received five bids, two of which were local contractors, and one of those was awarded the project. In 2004, our project received five bids. Four of those five were local contractors, and again, one of those received the award. Despite the fact that each of those projects exceeded $100,000, neither of the projects was bid specifying prevailing wage. The Borough was relying on an exclusion that had historically been applicable to sidewalk and curb replacement. I'll speak to the Commonwealth Court case that resulted from that 2004 project later, but the result was that from that date forward, all of our projects specified prevailing wage. The next project, bid with prevailing wage, received four bids, none of which were local contractors. The bidders were all from within Pennsylvania, but none were from near Evansburg. Our most recent project, bid in 2012, received 12 bids. Only two of those were local, and while the successful bidder was one of those local contractors, there were no small contractors that bid on the project. The same local legislator claimed that one could expect better craftsmanship from a union worker than one might receive from a non-union worker. That's ridiculous, and I think it's demeaning to the many non-union workers in the workforce. My own public works employees are union workers because they choose to be. That doesn't make them any better than the non-union employees in the town down the street. I can tell you that the best sidewalk project we ever had completed in Evansburg was a 2003 project completed by a non-union company. We've had many projects completed by union workers, some with good results and some with bad. Union membership has absolutely nothing to do with the quality of a worker's craftsmanship, and I might point out that union membership has nothing to do with the proposed legislation. Again, we're not here to debate the benefits of union membership or to exempt unions from performing our work or to suppress the wages of union workers. We're here seeking a reasonable adjustment to a threshold that requires prevailing wages to be paid on very small contracts. In 1961, small projects were exempted from prevailing wage for a reason. I can only assume the reason would have been to keep such projects as simple as possible and to help assure that small local companies could continue to easily compete for these projects in their local communities. That being the case, it seems only logical that the threshold amount should be adjusted for inflation. While we feel the adjustment should be closer to $250,000, the suggestion of $100,000 seems like a very reasonable compromise. I mentioned earlier the Commonwealth Court case Evansburg Borough versus the Prevailing Wage Appeals Board. This 2006 decision dealt with the issue of whether curb and sidewalk projects were subject to the prevailing wage. Evansburg had relied on a PennDOT memorandum of understanding that considered such work to be maintenance and therefore exempt from the prevailing wage. The project in question had been completed in 2005 without prevailing wages at a cost of $187,000. Upon the court's ruling, the cost of the contract was increased by $69,000, or just over 37%. Municipal projects are not bid with and without prevailing wage. We actually have very few opportunities to know for sure what the financial impact of prevailing wage is on the cost of any particular project, but this particular Commonwealth Court case illustrates clearly how substantial those costs can be. We raise this case today in support of efforts to better define what maintenance means. The act defines maintenance work as the repair of existing facilities when the size, type, or extent of such facilities is not thereby changed or increased. The replacement of existing curbs and sidewalks seem to satisfy that definition. We don't feel that the definition contained in House Bill 665 actually goes far enough. While it does include the replacement of curb, it does not include sidewalk. Generally, both curb and sidewalk are completed at the same time under the same contract. Our experience shows that 100 linear feet of curb costs approximately the same as 100 feet of sidewalk. Because more than 15% of the contract then would be for non-maintenance work, the sidewalk, the entire contract will then become subject to prevailing wage. The replacement of sidewalk should be included in the definition of maintenance work. I have no problem at all in a situation where a new curb or new sidewalk is being installed where none existed before, being considered new construction and being subject to prevailing wage, but the simple replacement of existing sidewalk as well as curb should be clearly defined as maintenance. Unnecessarily paying prevailing wages for small projects and maintenance work is an undue hardship on local governments and therefore the taxpayers. I've heard arguments where the impact on project costs range from 10% to 40%, but in Evansburg, we know that the impact has been over 30% of the total project cost. In Evansburg Borough's case, the savings would be directed to the taxpayers as it's the taxpayers that are assessed the actual bid cost for the sidewalk at their property. So if we unnecessarily pay 30% for the cost of a sidewalk project, 30% more than we need to, that additional 30% is billed directly to the property owner. Frankly, as House Bill 665 is written, it does little to address the dilemma created by the Commonwealth decision in the Evansburg case. It clarifies that curbs are maintenance, but without including sidewalks, curb projects will continue to require prevailing wage as the joint sidewalk will exceed 15% of the project. The legislation was amended in committee to prohibit us from awarding separate contracts for curb and sidewalk. Clearly defining routine street milling and resurfacing as maintenance is a big help to all local governments, and we believe that that reflects the original intent of the law. I want to thank the chairman and the members for conducting this hearing today on an issue that's so important to local governments, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Good afternoon and welcome to Johnstown, Pennsylvania. I appreciate the opportunity to address you folks today. Like I said, I'm kind of coming in on the change up there. My name's Bob Heffelfinger. I'm a Richland Township Supervisor. Our population is close to 13,000, and we have approximately 106 miles of roadway here in Cambria County. Once again, thank you for allowing me to present. Not only am I representing the Cambria County Townships as the president of our organization, but also the 1,455 townships in Pennsylvania that are represented by pizazz on the topic of prevailing wage reform. This issue is very important to my township and to all the townships throughout the Commonwealth. Just real quickly, gentlemen, ladies, gentlemen, you may want to make a note of this. I spoke with my public works director this morning, again, not really prepared to come here and present, and I will tell you that in Richland Township alone, that supports a lot of the economic growth here in Cambria County, we've had to reduce our paving and projects by close to 40%. So, that's right from the horse's mouth, so to speak. Prevailing Wage Act was first adopted in 1961 to implement the provisions of the Federal Davis Bacon Act for public works projects paid for with state and local funds. Now 50 years later, the threshold of $25,000 remains unchanged despite the impact of inflation over half a century, while recent court interpretations have applied the act's provisions to a broader array of projects. Throughout the past hearings, you have heard and will hear again today from both sides on this issue regarding what the proposed changes would do from their respective positions. What I will share with you today are examples of the increased costs under the current prevailing wage law, and that I have experienced with my township, as well as examples from other townships impacted by this law. The law forced us to limit the amount of roadwork that my township is able to complete each year and has changed the way we do things. Specifically, my township completes projects in-house and we put out for bid prior to the Youngwood decision. We would be able to stretch taxpayers' dollars further and maintain our township roads and infrastructure better if the law was amended. To this end, I ask the legislation be considered that would exclude maintenance work on roads, highways, and bridges from compliance with the act, including the replacement of guide rails and curbs, pavement overlays of up to three and a half inches, road widening that does not result in additional lanes, and bridge cleaning and resurfacing. Specifically, we support House Bill 665, which would address the Pennsylvania Supreme Court's 2008 Youngwood decision and eliminate the costly requirement that road and bridge maintenance projects comply with the prevailing wage law. This change would greatly benefit all townships throughout the Commonwealth and others here in Cambria County. Additionally, we have been told by smaller contractors, this came to our group, that they actually have decided against bidding on certain projects when the prevailing wages are required due to the increased costs. So, you know, we do not feel that local contractors should be put at a disadvantage for local projects. In neighboring Portage Township, Cambria County, the estimated cost to build a new township building was 25% higher due to the provisions of the current prevailing wage law and have put off completing this project indefinitely. Rose Township, customer of mine, Jefferson County, spent $36,000 on oil and chip for two township roads that needed to be paved, but the township could not afford to do so because of the higher cost of prevailing wages. because of the higher cost of prevailing wages. Preston Township in Vinago County paid nearly 12 percent more for a new bridge, and Liberty Township Mercer County paid 32 cents more per square yard for seal coat for prevailing wage project versus a seal coat project under the prevailing wage threshold. All of these examples represent an inefficient use of taxpayer money, and doing less for more in a time when we need to do more with less. To alleviate these increased costs to local governments, I would ask that those of you here today to consider increasing the prevailing wage threshold from 25,000 to at least $189,000, with an annual cost of living adjustment. Increasing the prevailing wage to this amount would account for the increase in the cost of living since 1963. Currently before you is House Bill 796, which would increase the current prevailing wage threshold from 25,000 to 100,000, but without future cost of living adjustments. I would ask that you amend House Bill 796 to $189,000 to make this important reform bill meaningful and reflect the change in cost of living since 1963, and add an annual adjustment to reflect inflation going forward, making additional threshold adjustments by the General Assembly unnecessary. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just to begin, I guess I'd like to ask one question and have each person answer it. The quality requirements for the work that you do, that's not any different? Or what are, are they the same or different depending on who gets the job, a larger contractor, a smaller contractor, union contractor, non-union contractor? Are there any differences in the contracts?
At the county level, there is no difference in terms of what is expected out of the contractor.
Absolutely none. We're able to provide our own local inspection. We have our own standards. They need to comply with the specifications. We don't care who they are or how big they are.
Yeah, same. I mean, the specifications of the bid establish the work to be done, and we want to get the best work for the best dollar.
Okay. So what are the differences in a contract? Say you have one that's less than $25,000, that isn't subject to prevailing wage requirements, and you have one that's larger than $25,000. Are there any differences in the way you write the contracts?
No. There is a sentence added in the specifications that indicates it is prevailing wage. You know, they need to know that for their bid.
If over 25,000.
If it's over 25,000. That's really the only difference.
But as far as the scope of work and what needs to be done and so forth, you don't tell them that you have to pay their workers a certain wage per hour? You just simply say you have to comply with the Prevailing Wage Act?
We provide, if it's a prevailing wage project, we're required to provide the wage rates issued by the Department of Labor and Industry. So they are provided those, they don't have to hunt for those.
But is it relevant to you guys what the workers are paid during these projects?
I wouldn't say it's...
If you wouldn't have to comply with the Prevailing Wage Act? I mean, you don't care what a contractor pays their workers?
Exactly. Yeah. If it's not prevailing wage, we don't care. If it is prevailing wage, it is relevant, because they are submitting certified payrolls, and we're to verify that in fact they're paying what they should be.
So then it takes, it also takes you then more to audit a prevailing wage job than one that's not prevailing wage?
Well, we don't audit it, per se, but it does require more administrative time, because on nearly all prevailing wage jobs, somebody is checking that. It could be the trade unions that are checking, that we complied with prevailing wage, whoever. Somebody's always checking, and we do spend time at that.
Do you spend time checking that as municipalities?
Yes, we do.
And as a county.
My Public Works Director does.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn it over to the chairman then for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, thanks for coming. This is the third in our four prevailing wages, so we've heard constantly, you know, both sides saying the same thing. But I would like to ask each individual, do you know how the prevailing wage is determined by the Department of Labor?
I'm sorry, do we know how?
How, what is your understanding of how the Department of Labor determines the prevailing wage in your area?
I think the only way they have to determine it is the wages that are submitted by businesses to indicate what the wage is. And prevailing is by definition, then, what prevails.
I would like to add that when asked for information that you have an option in terms of providing or not providing, the information you get back can be skewed, that depending on those businesses that are providing information, and you've heard examples of, the larger the business, probably the easier it is for them to deal with some of the administrative burdens that occur with certain laws. That if then you have smaller businesses not providing information, it could change what is the prevailing wage. I think the thing that we need to know and understand here is that no matter how the law is being executed, what is the real impact to these municipalities when it comes down to the bottom line? If there are smaller businesses that are not actually providing information that would change that prevailing wage, that doesn't mean that the law doesn't have a very real impact that you heard about today. That if there was a change from a lowering, even though that may be small or significant, depending on who's looking at that information and how they feel about it, the fact of the matter is, what you've heard here is what's happening. And so when you talk about how it occurs, if it isn't occurring the way the legislators intended, then that's not something we can change. It's not something we have impact on.
I didn't ask you that. I just asked you your understanding of how the Department of Labor determines what prevailing wage is in your area.
And I'm trying to make sure that we understand that...
I don't have to understand. I just need to know if you understand how it is determined.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. Mr. Heffelfinger?
Heffelfinger. No, I really do not know exactly how that's determined. The assumption would be, based on current rate of living, et cetera, but regardless, the challenge is...
It's not. Mr. Smith had it right. It's determined by the companies in your area, not small, large companies, providing to the Department of Labor what their costs are, what the cost of labor is. Now, we've been doing this for 10 years. Everybody keeps saying it's the union wage, and I agree with you. This isn't, prevailing wage isn't about union, non-union. It's about providing the prevailing wage in that area to whoever's doing that job, to make sure the state's getting the right amount of work for the right amount of money. And that's the prevailing wage, and nobody could go under that on public projects, right? No. As of August, where is it, August 8th? We checked with the Department of Labor, August 20th, right? No wage data, other than the collective bargaining agreements that the unions submit to the Department of Labor, are used in the calculations for the prevailing wage. So I know we keep saying the prevailing wage is too high. We've heard testimony that it's no more than 20 percent of the project. And you know, and you guys are pretty knowledgeable, you know what materials have cost, right? So if, we've heard a lot of, and it's basically about 20 percent of the project is prevailing wage. And what I always say is, nobody's going to do it for zero, right? So it's got to be, what can you say between 10 and 20? This isn't as big a problem as I think it is, but, you know, we're here to find that out. Would you guys be amenable to amending the law so it says that if you do not participate in sending in the wages, you are no longer eligible for public work? See, nobody's sending it in. That's our problem. They get to beat the high rate, but there's only people who have signed the collective bargaining agreement send in the data. So they're trying to say, we want lower, we don't want that to beat a wage, but we don't want to submit what our wages are. It can't have it both ways.
Chairman Keller, Evansburg Borough isn't saying that the prevailing wage is too high, and I don't, that's not the point at all of the two bills that are pending. Local contractors don't really care what the prevailing wage is, and they don't begrudge anybody for earning the prevailing wage. They simply don't like, first of all, being told that they, for 100,000, a project that they know they can do for 100,000, anyone telling them that they have to charge 130,000 to do it.
But you guys are here saying that the prevailing wage is driving that cost up, that the local wages are the determining factor in driving that, those numbers up so you can't participate?
No. I'm simply, and I don't mean to speak for everybody here, but Evansburg Borough is simply saying that the prevailing wage law is a huge burden to small businesses, and that we would like the minimum threshold of 25,000 addressed. And to the municipalities, we would like the maintenance better defined. The prevailing wage, I'm not interested in suppressing local wages, suppressing the prevailing wage. I don't believe you would be. I certainly don't...
No, you got that right.
I certainly don't believe the trade unions would support that type of legislation. And I don't believe that banning local businesses from the very few times that they're able to do any public work anymore is an answer to this.
I have a couple concerns in terms of what was said, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Penner indicated, it isn't a union issue that we're talking about here today. In fact, if a company can do a job for 100,000, and the prevailing wage says it has to be done for a minimum of 150,000, I think the issue is more than just materials. That administrative costs alone for a small company to then provide the type of information and make sure that it's accurate and responsibly submitted throughout the year becomes a much larger issue for the smaller companies, which is what Mr. Penner was talking about there. That it becomes easier for some of the larger companies, and sort of a type of discrimination that I'm certain the law did not mean. That these issues of changing that minimum threshold for inflation sort of meets the original intent of 1961, that the maintenance issue that Mr. Penner talked about meets the intent of that original law. And so instead of saying that we're denying wages from anyone, maybe, as Mr. Penner said, we're making sure that our local people that are in dire need of jobs will have those jobs, because they can bid on these projects.
But you're saying that a 100,000 job is being driven up to 150,000 job. What is driving that? What's driving that cost?
The prevailing wage is driving that cost.
The prevailing wages?
That's the difference. I believe the Commissioner and I was, we had different numbers, but yes, that's what's driving.
Commissioner, you said that you had a bridge that could have been completed for...
Let's take the 90,000 job for repairing a house. And that's sort of a nice example, because it covers so much of the industry, in terms of electrical, plumbing, you know, everything that goes along with working in that house. What was a 90,000 job became a 155,000 job when prevailing wages were considered.
May I stop you there?
Certainly.
So it is the wages, which is how I started this question. You guys are saying it's the wages that are driving up the cost.
I understand the argument, and...
I'm not trying to make an argument. I'm really trying to find out, if that is the problem, and if that is the cost of doing that project, the labor cost, is driving that up, then my solution, which I think we should look at first, is have the true prevailing wage in your area. And the only way we could get that is by making sure that everybody participates to send in their data. I've been saying this for 10 years.
I agree with your premise, and I think any municipality would say that, yeah, the prevailing wage is the basis for that. But, that being said, that's not what's being addressed in this legislation or why we're here today. It has nothing to do, if one feels that the prevailing wage is too high, too bad. It's not even a factor in the proposed legislation. We're just simply talking about the threshold for excluding it and taking maintenance out of it, that's all.
This isn't to you, but according to the parliamentarian, we're discussing the subject of prevailing wage. So I could discuss the subject of prevailing wage, and not just the bills that are in front of us, which I believe we should only be discussing.
I'm sorry, you can talk about whatever you want.
That's between me and the chairman.
I don't mean to tell you can't talk whatever you want to talk about.
Chairman Keller, I guess I would say that, you know, the Federal Davis Bacon, you know, when it's possible, they pull from private contracts, and, you know, there's a bill out here that Representative Delozer has for stricter, you know, reporting guidelines in private sector construction projects.
And I think that basically would be one of the steps we need to look at to fix this. And I'm the only one here, so I get a little extra time.
Chairman Keller, may I also respond to that? Thank you very much. When you start talking prevailing wages, and you're going to average across the board, the ability of an individual to go out and, in a capitalist system, find the best cost for the quality that they're looking for is one of the founding tenets within our society. That being said, when you talk about a prevailing wage, and you say we're going to average all of these wages together, you may not find that best dollar, and therefore the best use of the taxpayers' dollar in this case.
That's what the prevailing wage originally started to do, to make sure the taxpayers got their best bang for the buck, and that's the whole intent of the law. One more question, Mr. Chairman, please? And I may get a little off-subject, but Mr. Heffelfinger?
Heffelfinger.
Heffelfinger, I'm sorry. We're talking about the best use of taxpayers' money, and you mentioned PSATs.
I was expecting you to ask me about that.
Yes. That is funded by taxpayer money.
That's correct.
How much dues does your township pay to...
Ryan, how much do we pay?
Let me answer that. Mr. Chairman, I guess I could make the argument...
I don't know the exact amount.
Excuse me, if I could just interrupt here. I could make the argument that you have, any public employee that pays union dues that is getting their paycheck from a prevailing wage job is using taxpayer dollars to fund that union, and therefore...
No. Boy, that's a stretch. What law school did you go to?
What's that?
That's a stretch.
I went to a public school.
No. A union dues is coming directly out of the union guy's pocket. He's supporting what he believes with his money. We're supporting lobbying through taxpayer money. And all those organizations are nothing but big lobbying groups.
If we could just stay to the subject of prevailing wage.
Well, I just, we're talking about misuse of taxpayer funds.
No, we're talking about prevailing wage.
And I have the bill here, and I'm going to ask you guys to sign on to. But I'm going to go down that road, because it's, I believe it's the same subject. I've used up all my time, but thank you, gentlemen.
Representative Cutler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Chairman Keller, we can swap cosponsors later. I have a bill that would prohibit the collection of public sector union dues with public assets, so we should talk afterwards. Gentlemen, one of the things that you each brought up that I think is very important, and I think it goes to Chairman Keller's point that he was trying to make, you know, the prevailing wage is only one component of the overall bidding process. And you may not have the answers today, but if you could follow up, I would certainly appreciate the information. You all referenced the administrative overhead that comes with essentially managing a prevailing wage project. Do you have any kind of estimate as far as the paperwork requirements or the man-hours that are put on behind the scenes in order to manage it? And then who is ultimately responsible for that? I'm assuming in each of your cases, it's the respective municipality or borough or whatever, whatever you might have.
I would say, in our experience, that there is some additional administration of a project that requires prevailing wage. But that's what we do. We're not complaining about that. What's more important, I think, is the administrative overhead that's put on local and small businesses to comply for what's relatively a small project. Again, it's not that our local small businesses don't want to pay prevailing wage, or begrudge the guy down the street for earning prevailing wage, they just don't care. They want to be able to bid on a job, do the job, get paid for the job. They don't have any staff at home, their desk is their kitchen table, they don't have anybody to, you know, compile all the reporting and to, you know, to sit with an audit overview or anything. They just don't want to... They, they just don't wanna deal with the process, therefore they don't, uh, they don't bid.
In taking a look at prevailing wage, we have not, uh, broken out project by project in terms of, this is the cost associated with admin, the administration of prevailing wage. Certainly something that we can do, but, uh, it, it prob-- one, it won't be quick, uh, to get you those numbers. Sometimes, in fact, one of the issues that you're dealing with is opportunities lost. If a project increases in price and never gets accomplished, okay, now that doesn't get reported anywhere. And those opportunities lost, like proving a negative, is almost impossible to go back and say, "Well, we could have done X, Y, and Z with or without prevailing wage." That's why the one DCED study where they literally asked us to take a look at bidding the project with prevailing wage and without is, is sort of unusual and, uh, and was sort of unique in terms of county history and a, a snapshot in terms of what was happening. But, but that takes the whole picture in, in view there.
Thank you. In regards to that study, would you be able to forward that to the committee? I, I know personally I'd be interested in, in seeing that and a comparative between the two bids.
We'll have, we'll have the individual, uh, send up the information.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? Is, is, is there stats in the state of Pennsylvania that are showing what municipalities aren't doing anymore? In other words, in, you know, and...
It depends upon who...
I mean, it, it's cut and dry. Something's happening, costs of products, wages, something's happening that we do less than we historically did.
That's what these, that's what, that's what these meetings will determine.
I know, I understand that. So I guess, I guess, you know, as, as we're, as we play tennis, it, it, I, isn't that really at the heart of it? Municipalities are doing less than they did...
I guess that's what you guys would be telling us.
Okay.
Yes, so we are learning how much less you are doing.
I mean, that's, that's it. Regardless of how it's determined, that's happening.
Representative Truitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, all three of you, for your testimony today. Representative Cutler kind of, kind of covered about half of the point of my question. I was, from the, as already mentioned, this is the third hearing and, and what I picked up in the, in the first couple is that the difference in costs in projects as a result of applying prevailing wages seems to far exceed the difference in the amount of money that's actually paid to people in wages. Um, you know, we're, we're paying artificially inflated wages as a result of the problem that Chairman Keller points out, but that still doesn't explain how we get to a thirty percent increase in the project cost. So I'm assuming that it's gotta be in a lot of the administration of prevailing wages or markups by contractors and so forth. And I'm wondering if you have any insight into, you know, how does increasing, you know, adding another ten dollars an hour to a worker's pay cause a thirty dollar per hour increase in, in project costs? Do you have any thoughts on, on what might be driving that? Because it seems to me the problem here isn't necessarily the actual wages paid to a worker, it's, it's the compounded effect when you pay them more and, and have more administration and markups and so forth. And, uh, I'm interested in understanding a little deeper, where does this all come from?
I, I can't lay my hands on it, but I know that I have that here in this packet that, that might go to, to some of that answer. Uh, the two thousand and four sidewalk project that I referenced where we bid it without prevailing wage, we lost a court case, we had to pay prevailing wage and the cost went up, uh, thirty, I think thirty-seven percent. What totaled that thirty-seven percent or the sixty-some, some thousand dollar increase is what I think I'll be able to give you here before I leave today. Uh, all of that wasn't employee wa-- uh, employee wages that actually worked out on a job. The concrete workers, the farmers, anything like that, the fini-- the concrete finishers. Uh, some of that was the secretary that works in the office that was gonna do the administration. Uh, there were, there were six or seven or eight factors that were involved in that. I, I tried to lay my fingers on it here quickly for you, but, but I can get you that before we leave.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to, uh, to discuss a, a couple of issues here. As Mr. Penner talked about the difference when he bid for a prevailing wage job and no longer locals were involved. If I've got to bring concrete in and it's not gonna come locally, there's an additional cost, whether, whether you're talking about the wage of that individual, but the number of hours that that individual's driving that concrete truck now, besides the fuel associated with it, or any other things that you might have to do to keep your contract, uh, your concrete viable for further distances. And so, as, as you talk about just a strict wage issue, when you start talking about a local bid versus a distant bid, there, there are issues more than just wages that start falling into that. Can I give you those exact numbers? No. But again, that's, you know, that would be another issue.
Representative Lucas?
I just have a couple of questions. First off, right now, for like bid bonds and performance bonds, is that put out on individual basis or is that put out at the twenty-five thousand dollar limit? Does anyone know that? And if it is put out at a twenty-five thousand dollar limit now, is that going to be bumped up to a hundred thousand under this new bill? Because that adds a considerable amount of money for bid bonds and performance bonds. So that's administrative costs. I don't know if anyone has that.
Was the bid bond or the performance bond or the maintenance bond, tho-- those are based on the actual, well, the bid bond is based on the actual amount of the bid. I mean, if, if the bid ends up being higher, that's a higher bond and a higher premium.
But is that based on the twenty-five thousand?
No.
Is that, is that just something that's put on, on every job?
Oh, the requirement?
Yes.
You mean? Uh, no, municipalities are required to, to, we're required to require a, a bid bond.
At what threshold? At what threshold?
Well, we do it on any project. Uh, there is a threshold and...
I'm just wondering if that threshold is going to be raised to the hundred thousand dollars? I think that's, that, I think that's an important question because that's a substantial amount of money comes down. And I'll, just to give you a little background, I'm, I'm on both sides of this issue. I was a contractor for thirty years. Uh, we, we're non-union, but we hired union for particular jobs. We paid prevailing wage for particular jobs. We, uh, my guys liked it, we paid prevailing wage, but it cost me a lot more money. Not only, and this is something else that, that you guys might not be aware of, is not only are you given a list of how much the, the job is, an exact job title, like if you're a carpenter, if you're a laborer, you can't do carpenter's work, so you're gonna, gonna pay a higher rate. On top of that is your benefits. And sometimes the benefits are almost as much as the wage you're paying. So you're paying out forty or fifty dollars per hour for your guy. So it's a substantial amount of money. Uh, I also was a mayor of Edinburgh for two years in a, on, on Borough Council, so I dealt with these contracts. Uh, and I did work for school districts and I did work for municipalities and things like that. And sometimes we were under the, the twenty-five thousand dollars and sometimes we weren't, so we had to pay prevailing wage. And it definitely drove the costs up.
If I could though, the, to, to your original question about the bids, that the requirements for bidding, or for bid bonds are actually in the borough code, the township code, you know, the, the local government codes, they, they would not, I don't see how they could be impacted by, uh, by the, the legislation that's being considered. It's a, it's a whole different code.
I just wonder what the threshold is because I know when you bid projects that are gonna be prevailing wage, the bid bonds are included into them. And we do smaller projects, less than twenty-five thousand, there weren't. So I just wonder if that's tied into that number, and that's, I think, something we need to look into. Because it is a substantial amount of money. Just an example of a, a project going on in our town, a water line had to be, is gonna have to be laid for a new subdivision. And the township said, "Well, well, we'll do it." And, and the contractor said, or the, the developer said, "Well, let me see if I can get it done." The same exact contractor will lay the pipe regardless if the township does it or the individual person does it, the developer. And it was ninety-three thousand dollars if the developer did it and a hundred and thirteen thousand if the municipality did it because of prevailing wage, because of the bonding, because of the other issues involved. It's same exact contractor will be doing the job. Whether he's not, he's not union, but he would pay prevailing wage if he was working for the, uh, for the municipality. So it definitely increases the cost.
Sure. Representative Keller, I could answer Representative Truitt's question in thirty seconds if you'd like.
I'll grant you a thirty second.
Uh, I mentioned that the two thousand and four project had an original cost of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand and that it increased by sixty-nine thousand. The sixty-nine thousand was actually a price we negotiated. What the difference truly was originally was a hundred and two thousand. A hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar project would have increased by a hundred and two, and those are based on numbers that didn't come from the contractor, but came from LNI's audit of the project. They, they determined these. It was forty-six thousand for the employees directly. It was nineteen thousand, and I'm not going into the sense, nineteen thousand, uh, for taxes and insurance for those employees, but not directly to them. It was twenty-six thousand dollars for, uh, labor and overhead to the business, to the contractor. Uh, and, a- again, we, we had no choice on what LNI said we had to, to owe the workers. So we settled on that and then we negotiated to balance. Our net increase was the sixty-five that I cited, which was thirty-seven percent of the total, uh, project.
Representative Lucas Rees, any additional members? Any, no, thank you. Uh, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate your testimony and, uh, we'll give the, the other panelists a minute to get ready.
We'd like to thank the board for this opportunity. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Is it cooler out there? We have some people, they probably have some people working on that. We'll get back, we'll get going here with the next panel. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. And I have to say, Mr. Siriani said this is like Groundhog Day, uh, earlier today before we started, so, but, uh, hopefully we'll all learn something new at each one of these, uh, these meetings that we have and, uh, help educate, uh, the public also on what's happening. So, gentlemen, if you could just give a brief introduction of who you are and then we'll start with the, the testimony with Mr. Siriani, since you're first on the list.
My name's Frank Siriani and I'm the president of the Pennsylvania State Building Trades Council.
My name is Abe Amoros and I'm the Pennsylvania Legislative Director for the Laborers International Union.
James Clinch Jr., Business Manager of the Operating Engineers Local Sixty-Six.
My name's Regis Ryan, I'm a business agent with Steamfitters in Pittsburgh and also as far as Pennsylvania.
Thank you, gentlemen, and Mr. Siriani, you can begin when you're, you're ready. And please, if you could, so we can pick it up on the audio, speak into the, uh, microphones when you're testifying.
Uh, thank you, Representative Keller, and thank the other Representative Keller for letting, allowing us to testify here today on behalf of, uh, our members and, uh, construction workers of the state of Pennsylvania. As I said, my name is Frank Siriani, I'm the president of Pennsylvania State Building Trades Council, and we have a hundred and thirteen local unions throughout the state of Pennsylvania, sixteen regional councils, and we represent collectively a hundred and thirty-six thousand construction workers in the state of Pennsylvania, which is a third of the construction workers in the state of Pennsylvania. Uh, I'm happy to be joined here today by quite a few of our members from, uh, the area. A lot of them are, uh, union representatives, and individually they represent thousands of workers in this, in this area. Uh, so they thought it was best for them to come in and find out what's going on in their neighborhood, uh, and attend this hearing, uh, so they could better represent their members. Uh, we work in cooperation with over thirty-five hundred contractors in the state of Pennsylvania. And as far, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be brief because I feel like I'm repeating myself and repeating myself, but, um, we negotiate our wages in a, in an environment in each individual area. So in Cambria County or Lackawanna County, the wages that are prevailing in that area that we negotiate, uh, are done in the free market, uh, through collective bargaining. We negotiate with the companies in that area for the rates in that area, and by doing that, uh, you know, that's how our rates are, 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 uh, developed. And we negotiate what works in the area. We can't ask for more money than the market will allow because we do a blend of prevailing wage and private work. And our wages are based in the private sector, not on the public sector. We don't negotiate anything for prevailing wage, we negotiate it in the private sector. So when you, when the Department of Labor and Industry decides to use our rates because they are the prevailing rate in the area, through submission and through the number of hours we work in that area, which is part of the process, um, you know, you're getting what is the prevailing wage in that area. Uh, sure, there may be some companies, as Representative Keller said, that do not submit, and we found that none of the non-unions submit. None of the non-union companies submit their wages. Why? You'd have to ask them. Uh, we're proud of our wages, we're proud of our skills, we're proud of our members, and we're not afraid to tell anybody that they're quality workers and they do a great job and we, we're, you know, we, we promote that. But, uh, you know, our wages aren't out of line for any area. I mean, if you look at the average wage in that area, we're in there. But if you take a guy who has a station wagon, who has two ladders and paint, paints, and average that in, you're not getting a fair, uh, rendition of what happens in that area because that guy can't paint a school. He can't paint, uh, a college. He can't paint a, like, you know, a commercial building. Uh, as far as the wages and the surveys and all the things that have happened through the years, uh, I'd like to give you a little bit of history. You know, the, uh, there was a survey done under the original administration in nineteen ninety-six, and the rates were reduced by, I don't know, ten, fifteen percent. The average cost per square foot on all public projects went up. And it went up substantially. And that's, that's documented, and it was documented by the Keystone Research Center who actually did the evaluation. And, uh, their, their outcome was that it went up substantially because it took more people to do the work. Now, you can speculate however you want to on why it took more people. Maybe they didn't wanna work as hard because they weren't making decent wages, maybe they didn't care anymore, maybe they weren't skilled. I'm not gonna hang that on anyone, but I know that's a fact of what happened. So, um, you know, we talk about small companies. Small companies don't wanna do paperwork, small companies don't wanna, um, you know, pay, uh, a, a living wage in the area. Well, we have a lot of small companies. We have a lot of ten-man shops, fifteen-man shops, they're small companies, and they do a lot of the work from one thousand to a million dollars. So, you know, it's not a matter of the small companies not being able to do this because they're sitting at their kitchen table filling out forms. And by the way, what's wrong with having to have some responsibility when you're getting taxpayers' money? I think it's a privilege for someone to bid on these jobs, to take our tax dollars back to their company and hand it out across the state. You know, I mean, it's not a real big thing to say, "Oh, well, they shouldn't have to fill out forms, they shouldn't have, we shouldn't have to know whether they have documented workers or whether they have undocumented workers." You know, this is a responsibility, and there's nothing wrong with filling out certified payrolls so everyone knows who's on that job and what they're paying and, and everyone's getting a fair shot at that. Uh, so that, that argument to me is just irrelevant. I, I think anybody who wants to do business with a public body ought to be prepared to do it. And if they're not, then they shouldn't be bidding on the projects. And again, those projects go to the lowest responsible bidder. I think that, uh, this committee could start looking at what we're calling responsible bidders because there's been a lot of failures on projects as well because of, uh, you know, companies not being qualified, but they had the lowest price. You know, we can race to the bottom in Pennsylvania, but I don't think it's the, the avenue that anyone in our legislature thinks we should proceed in. Um, as you'll hear from other testifiers here today, this law was put into place to protect taxpayers, to protect, uh, the citizens of Pennsylvania, to protect the businesses of Pennsylvania. Uh, we fight for it because we believe in it. And, uh, there was some mention here earlier, the Davis Bacon Act. The Davis Bacon Act, the threshold is two thousand dollars. So, you know, there's some comparisons here... So, you know, there's some comparisons here that, you know, if we're gonna look at different comparisons, we should, you know, look at all of them, and I think we should be forthcoming in all of it. The square footage cost, though, you're not gonna change that. You put a project out to bid for fifty thousand dollars in the specs, in the Dodge reports, your bids are gonna come in around fifty thousand dollars. Okay? You put it out for a hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna come in pretty close to a hundred thousand dollars. It may come in way over, and you may ask for a rebid, and you might get, you know, a little bit of profit margins knocked down or a little bit of, you know, sharpening your pencil here when you're an estimator. You know, estimators, they have a hard job. You know, they look at who's bidding the project, they look at what's going on with the project, they say, wow, this guy, you know, I know he has a lot of overhead, so I'm gonna bid cheaper. You know, he's got ten trucks, I only have five. My insurance is lower. My experience rate on my, or my worker's comp is lower. You know, all these things factor into these projects. It's not just a wage thing. And the last hearing, which some of you were at and some of you were not there, the big thing was material cost. I heard over and over again, materials are so expensive, they double, they triple, they double, they triple. We have to lower prevailing wage. Well, I don't see that as an answer for cutting people's wages or the attempt to cut people's wages as a remedy to lower construction costs because prices aren't gonna go backwards. I don't care how hard you try or how many people sit up here and say, we think we can do an extra job, or an extra five-hundred-thousand-dollar job, if they could do an extra five-hundred-thousand-dollar job for free. That's amazing to me. Those guys must have worked thousands of hours on that bridge. As a matter of fact, I've been around over twenty-five-hundred hours, which is a long time, you know, on a bridge project. You know, they get done in half that time. So, you know, to have someone come in here and say, well, this costs this, and that costs that, and this costs this, and that costs that, without any documentation, you know, I think, I think you should have that. I mean, the actual bid sheets, well, let's look at the bid sheets. How many overages were there? Were there any extras on the job? You know, the final payment is always different than the original bid in public projects. And don't ask me why, because I don't bid the projects, but it seems to be that's the trend in public projects, so. I'm not gonna keep going on and on, but I do want to touch again on the Youngwood Borough case because that was mentioned, and it's mentioned at every hearing, that there was a memorandum of understanding that was handed off to the Department of Labor, unsigned, from someone in the administration at LNI, and all of a sudden, repaving projects and milling projects and certain projects were excluded from prevailing wage. Now, that was illegal, and the people that did it were going on some kind of paper they heard about or were told about, and they circumvented the law. And all the people that were putting those jobs out for bid, you heard, they have a responsibility to say whether it's prevailing wage or not. Well, they took an oath of office to uphold the laws of Pennsylvania and the Constitution of Pennsylvania and the Constitution of the United States. Well, when they started doing that, they were breaking the law. And when it finally got big enough that somebody noticed and somebody challenged it, the Supreme Court validated the law as it is written, and it's not that they're being punished, it's just that they got caught with their hand in the cookie jar, they got away with murder for a while, and now that's over. And so now people are getting what they're paying for and what they're supposed to be paying for. So I have, you know, I keep hearing this over and over again about that case. You know, it gets a little old, and I'm gonna stop there because I will just get redundant on my other testimonies and go ahead, please.
I appreciate it. Representative Keller, Chairman Keller, I appreciate the opportunity to once again address this committee. Once again, we are here to discuss how these bills would impact not just labor but also the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. My name is Abe Amoros, and I am the Legislative Director for the Laborers International Union. We are a business-friendly union with more than thirty thousand members throughout the Commonwealth and twenty-three locals, and I'd like to thank those members who took the time today to be with us during this very important hearing. As you know, the Prevailing Wage Act was created at the federal level in nineteen thirty-one with the passage of the Davis Bacon Act, named after Senator James Davis from Pennsylvania and Representative Robert Bacon from New York. It was actually signed into law by Herbert Hoover, a Republican president on March third, nineteen thirty-one. And the premise for that law was simple. They wanted to protect local workers from unscrupulous contractors who were bringing in extraordinarily cheap labor from the state of Alabama into Congressman Bacon District in New York. And thanks to a Republican-controlled state legislature in nineteen sixty-one, prevailing wage laws in Pennsylvania have been successful in benefiting workers, their families, and the communities in which they live. These are good-paying and family-sustaining wages, which stimulate the economy and allow workers to spend more in their local communities and allow municipalities to function through the use of sales taxes, property taxes, and other revenue-generating methods, which are all good for municipalities, and I'm speaking as a former elected official and as a former appointed official in a third-class city in Pennsylvania. These bills before this committee do absolutely nothing to help working people. In fact, they hurt them. You know, the first argument against prevailing wage is always the cost of construction, that the prevailing wage law drives up the cost of construction. Now, some claim that eliminating the prevailing wage will reduce the total cost of a project anywhere from ten to thirty percent. Ten to thirty percent. Thirty percent, you heard a previous testifier say forty percent. Labor costs are typically only nineteen to twenty-four percent of a total cost of a project, depending on the scope. And when you're looking at the actual numbers, you will see how preposterous the claims of thirty percent are. So let's take a hypothetical situation. Let's take a bid of a million dollars for a new construction project. If we're to split the difference of the usual labor costs in construction projects and use twenty-two percent, that would be two-hundred-and-twenty thousand for the labor portion of the project. Obviously, any savings over twenty-two percent would be impossible unless the workers not only worked for free but also contributed to the materials of the project. Now, we really need an open and honest dialogue on the cost of materials and the cost of engineering studies, which are driving up these projects. I think that that is something that could be viewed as positive and constructive, not just to the members of this committee but also appointed and elected officials in smaller municipalities. This comes from a conversation that I had with a planning director in Washington County who was complaining to me that before a bridge, a small bridge of about ninety feet long, fifty feet wide, was to be constructed, she was staring at a pile of paperwork this thick, which ran her over one-hundred thousand dollars in studies. Again, we need an open and honest dialogue on that discussion as well. So to look deeper at the issue, let's assume, for instance, that we can actually save ten to thirty percent on that labor. The ten percent claim would result in the savings of twenty-two thousand or two-point-two percent of the total job cost, while thirty percent, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand equals sixty-six thousand or six-point-six percent. So can the two-point-two to six-point-six percent savings really be realized? And, you know, contractors bid on projects. They bid on projects based on wages, cost of materials, estimated number of employees to complete the job on schedule. And for our purposes, consider a number of contractors consisting of union and non-union bidding on a private job. Union wages are set and easily attainable, allowing the non-union contractor the advantage of adjusting the wage portion of the bid accordingly to gain an advantage in the bidding process. Now, while this does not guarantee that the wage portion of the bid will be passed on to the workers, it could just as easily be kept as profit for the contractor. Now, without prevailing wage laws, contractors are no, are under no obligation, either moral or legal, to pay their workers a determined wage or benefit. So how much of that savings will be passed on to the taxpayer and how much will be kept as profit? I've said this a hundred times, I'll say it again. I don't know of any contractor who is going to pass along any tax savings to the regular taxpayer. I don't. I don't know of anyone who's gonna pass it along to a school district, a county, a city, a township, a borough, or any municipality for that matter. In fact, when I see that first study that demonstrates to me and proves that there is some sort of tax savings, I will jump for joy. And therein lies a fundamentally flawed and rather dishonest approach. You see, taxpayers won't feel any relief, and it makes one wonder if anti-pervailing wage legislation is based upon proven, sound, and logical business practices or an ideology that is hostile to labor unions. I can appreciate the sentiments of the previous testifiers who say they're not anti-union. I don't believe that they are. But some of these things that keep piling up in Harrisburg make one think if that is really the case. Now, switching gears for just a moment, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the national unemployment rate is seven-point-four percent in Pennsylvania. In Cambria County, it's nine-point-two percent. We're also experiencing over thirteen percent unemployment in the construction industry statewide. Why would we possibly want to pile on to those negative numbers and hurt people, suppress their wages, and put them out of work? Changing the prevailing wage law will hurt our workers further by suppressing their wages, taking more from the bottom, and padding the top. You know, we touched upon this in the previous hearings as well. We do have highly skilled workers who require a significant amount of training, and those workers provide excellent projects, which come in under budget, on time, and they get it right the first time. They get it right the first time. And when it rains, they don't work. And when they don't work, they don't get paid. And so they're not out there making seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year. They're not working twelve months out of the year. They're working eight or nine months if they're lucky, and then finding a job at Cheats in the offseason until the construction season begins again. Now, the next several pages of my testimony I will not read, Mr. Chairman, simply because they are studies that provide more information on what I just talked about. But I just, I wanna, I wanna really end with this. We have a responsibility right now in the state of Pennsylvania to pass a comprehensive transportation bill that will put tens of thousands of people back to work on our roads and bridges. As you know, there are five thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-three structurally deficient bridges alone in Pennsylvania with over ten thousand miles of road that need to be redone, repaved. They need to be done right now. Instead of focusing on prevailing wage laws, I'm going to ask politely if you would just refocus and redouble your efforts on a comprehensive transportation bill that will put tens of thousands of people back to work. We also passed last year P-three legislation, the public-private partnership legislation, which would also help us in this endeavor. However, you can't have a P-three without public money, and until we have a comprehensive transportation bill in place, I'm afraid that simply is not going to be a reality. So once again, I want to thank you for listening. I realize we have one more hearing. I don't think I provided anything new since the last time. However, it's good to always reinforce these key arguments, especially for those in the audience who have not heard it before. So I want to thank you for your patience and your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead when you're ready.
Representative Keller, Chairman Keller, members of the committee, as you heard, my name is James Quince Jr. I'm the Business Manager of the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 66, representing over seven thousand men and women in the thirty-three western counties of Pennsylvania, including here in Cambria, who work in the construction, pipeline, utility, and the heavy equipment service industries here in Pennsylvania. These men and women are tax-paying, voting Pennsylvania residents who work hard every day constructing and maintaining this state's infrastructure and other economic development projects. They are an integral part of Pennsylvania's economic engine. I am here to speak today in opposition to changes in Pennsylvania's Prevailing Wage Act. Now, over the last several months, and in fact, really, over the last several years, you have heard testimony from both supporters and opponents of prevailing wage. Those opposed to the act claim that the wages required to be paid are not representative of the wages normally paid for this type of work and are, in fact, union wages. In addition, they have claimed that these wages increase the cost of the project to the taxpayer, negatively impact the economic health of Pennsylvania, and many public bodies need these cuts in order to balance their budgets. Most support their positions by citing a few studies, and in many cases, guesstimates as facts to support their position. It is my intent today to address these claims. First, prevailing wages are not union-inflated wages. They are simply the prevailing wage paid in a county for a particular type of work as determined by the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry through a wage survey. They are not the lowest wage or the highest wage or, in fact, the average wage. They are the prevailing wage. In the case of road milling, paving, and other infrastructure, that would be the state heavy and highway rates. These are the prevailing rates paid by both union and open shop contractors in that specific sector, which primarily includes road and bridge construction, street milling and paving, sewer and water line work, tunnels, et cetera. It does not include home remodeling, home building, and other industries like that. Most of the contractors in those sectors do not, in fact, bid public sector work. Simply put, these are the wages paid on more jobs in this industry in that county than any other wage by both union and open shop contractors. Second, many who have testified to reform or repeal of the Prevailing Wage Act have made the claim that it would result in savings of ten to thirty percent or even forty percent. Yet most do not provide any verifiable or legitimate study to support their claim. In fact, one testifier at your last meeting admitted that they could not provide any solid evidence to prove their savings claim. Consider that the average labor cost for most construction projects is around twenty percent, actually even less on many street and bridge construction projects. To get the savings claimed by those testifying against prevailing wage, the construction worker would have to work for free or, in some case, pay for the job. Now, several have cited the two thousand and two report issued by the Ohio Legislative Services Commission of Ohio's exemption from prevailing wages of school facilities projects resulting in project cost savings of ten to seventeen percent. A study of this study by Ohio State University Professor Herbert Weisberg found that the LSC statistical analysis was flawed and only included data based on project bids, not the actual cost of construction at the end of the project. Professor Weisberg's analysis found that eliminating prevailing wage did not cut construction cost. When asked, the Ohio Legislative Services Commission Director, that's the group that did the initial study, did not dispute the professor's findings. Now, others have cited the Mackinac Center for Public Policies nineteen ninety-nine study of what happened when Michigan repealed its prevailing wage law from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-seven. Professor Peter Phillips of the University of Utah has done two studies that have included what happened in Michigan, one in nineteen ninety-nine and one in two thousand and one. Both found that, in fact, eliminating prevailing wages for this period did not reduce costs. A two thousand and eight review of the Mackinac Study by Nushan Mahalia of the Economic Policy Institute found that it was flawed because it used hypothetical calculations not supported by evidence. Third, a number have testified that the paperwork required by contractors by the act is a burden. In June of this year, the Associated General Contractors of Ohio, who represents both union and open shop contractors, commented on this issue, and I quote, "Many aspects of public construction law require paperwork, contractual obligations, drug-free workplace, change orders, et cetera. While few contractors like to do paperwork, most understand that the reporting requirements, one, ensure that contractors are complying with state laws, and, two, allow public owners to track expenditures related to construction," end quote. It is a part of the business. Finally, even though the studies say otherwise, let us for a moment assume that prevailing wages raise the cost of a project by five percent. There are numerous studies that show that the hidden costs of eliminating prevailing wages would more than wipe out the savings. I can provide you with the list of the fifty-seven studies, and you can look at every one of them. I give you the study and the source, and I'll give you that list. A two thousand and six study to support the work when the Minnesota Legislative Auditor's Office, as it evaluated that state's act, determined that repealing of the act would result in an increase in cost overruns of five-point-three percent. That's cost overruns. In fact, studies consistently show that in states that repealed or eliminated prevailing wages, cost overruns escalated. In addition, these studies show that worker injuries increased fourteen to nineteen percent, serious injuries increased fifteen to twenty-one-point-five percent, and workers with health care declined seventy-nine percent. And states lose significant income to both municipalities and the state. Any savings to the state or local government is long gone, and, in fact, the project costs, both direct and indirect, actually grows. The good wages and benefits required under the act allow Pennsylvania workers, both union and non-union, to give back to the state and their communities through increased spending, taxes, and community involvement. These workers pay taxes, buy houses and cars, make other purchases... These workers pay taxes, buy houses and cars, make other purchases, and spend their disposable income here in Pennsylvania. In fact, prevailing wages are the easiest way to guarantee that these publicly funded construction projects employ Pennsylvania taxpayers. There is no incentive for a contractor to use transient or illegal workers to perform this work when he or she has to pay the prevailing wage. In 2008, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court noted that the Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Act's focus is placed squarely on protecting workers on public works from receiving substandard wages and should not punish workers. I believe that this should continue to be the act's focus. Now, Local 66 is willing to work with this legislature to identify a responsible course of action to address our transportation and infrastructure needs. And I would note that I think what we're hearing today is more about a funding crisis than a prevailing wage issue. It's just a lack of funds. That's what we need to address. But I believe that amending or repealing the Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Act is not the answer and will negatively affect the standard of living of all of Pennsylvanians working in the construction industry. Thank you. Your upreach.
Now that all the information's gone. First of all, my name is Regis Ryan. I am a business agent with the Steamfitters in Pittsburgh and also a part of the Pennsylvania pipe trades. We are proud to be celebrating our 100th year, 100 years of doing steam fitting work, which is all kinds of pipe work, HVAC. For 100 years, we sell labor. That's all we sell. We have a quality product. And that quality product is the same rate whether it's working on a public-funded job or a private-funded job. Our negotiated wage with our contractors does not vary depending on whether it's prevailing wage or not. I did put a PowerPoint together, and unfortunately, the previous three have taken care of most of it. But if I could ask you to go to where it says "More to the Story," because that's something that wasn't touched on today. And as I mentioned, we've been in the business 100 years, as most of these building trades have. And the reason we do it is because of training. And I forgot to say hi to you, gentlemen. I apologize. I also left my tie, which I was feeling bad about till I got here. Not so bad now. And it wasn't a Frank's Terry any tie, but it was a handsome tie. But anyhow, there's more to the story, and that's what I'd like to talk about, because everything else has been covered. If you go through the PowerPoint, you'll see, you'll see Abe's, a lot of his facts and figures, but in a more easy way to see if you can look it right at it. The University of Utah study that went into nine states in the West that lost the prevailing wage. In addition to occupational industries, injuries which rose 15 percent, career training at little or no cost to the taxpayer decreased by 40 percent. Our apprenticeship programs are based on our ability to work. The more we work, the more we, our dues deductions come out and pay for these apprentices. I invite each and every one of you, if you haven't done it yet, visit your local apprenticeship training centers. They're awesome. The other thing that happened is skilled tradespeople left the state in search of higher wages. When you come through your apprenticeship and you're a skilled mechanic in any of the different trades, you expect to get paid for your training. And if it's not here, you will travel. That's why they call them journeymen. And that's what happened in Utah. So how does that affect us? So what? Who cares? Well, there are over 8,000 Pennsylvania taxpayers participating in the building trades apprenticeships. 8,000 young men and women, gonna have a career. It's not gonna cost them a dime, and it will cost the taxpayer very little as well. Programs are jointly administered with contractors that we're signatory with. In other words, when we set up programs, the contractors are just as involved as we are, making sure that the programs are pertinent to what's going on right now. Safety, priority. I can't speak for everyone, but all my guys come out with OSHA 10 before they ever step site on a job. Before they start their apprenticeship, they do training. When they come to the job site, they're safety trained. Ours is five-year, many are four-year, intensive. If you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, if you're not showing up on time, if you're not working like you're supposed to work, we don't need you there. We couldn't exist for 100 years if we had a lot of guys, and everyone has a few. We basically have to have guys that do what we say they're gonna do to earn the money that they're making and their benefits. The building trades represent 75 percent of all apprentices registered in Pennsylvania. 75 percent. That's an amazing figure when you think about it. We're talking machinists, we're talking ABC, we're talking everybody. We represent 75 percent. We graduate 90 percent. And we're the taxpayers. I had 96,000 tradespeople, it's a little higher than that, 96,000 Pennsylvania taxpayers. That's who we are. So when you say we're raising the taxes on the people, we are the people. And we work for over 3,000 signatory Pennsylvania contractors, closer to 3,500, I understand. 3,500 Pennsylvania businesses hiring Pennsylvania workers, making a decent dollar, keeping that money in our community, sending our kids to college, buying economic stimulus. We enjoy benefits, including health care and pensions. Going back to the study, do we want a chance of 40 percent reduction? Now, I understand this is about raising the threshold here, but then it was increased to talk about all prevailing wage. It's very important. Non-signatory contractors must use their most skilled workers to be successful on prevailing wages. I sat at a similar meeting several years back. I believe the gentleman's name was Rogers, and that question came to him, Nicholas Rogers from Rogers Mechanical. How does this affect you, Mr. Rogers? I have to put my best people on those jobs in order to make a profit. Well, that's what we're talking about. They're tax-funded jobs. You should have your best people there. If your kids are going to that school, you should have the best people building that school. If we're all driving over the bridges, they should have the best people making those bridges. So just to reiterate what's said a lot other times, prevailing wage demands training. It encourages fair competition. It prevents fly-by-night contractors from underbidding a job by slashing wages, importing unskilled and/or illegal workers, and pocketing the tax dollars. All this information supports the reason the original prevailing wage passed by 183 to 4 in 1961. Not a lot has changed. My contractors run from two-man and one-man shops to huge shops, well over 100. We have the ability to handle almost any project, or we have the ability to handle every project. That's all I'd like my testimony to state. So when we're talking small projects, we have small project people. When we're talking large, we have large. When you're talking under 25,000 or over 25,000, in my particular industry with HVAC, there's a lot of those projects around. You're plumbing, you're electrical, you're painting, a lot of projects in that price range. You want the training to stay, you want the jobs to stay, you want your Pennsylvania craftspeople that are not on anyone's dime as far as getting, making a living or getting their education, I'm sorry. You want them to continue to work. And the best way to do that, as was witnessed by the study in Utah, is keep the prevailing wage. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'd just like to begin with a couple things that were mentioned, and I want to just start with Act 127 of 2012. And I don't know if you gentlemen are aware of what that act is, but that's the E-Verify on public work projects. So anybody bidding on a public works project is already required to make sure their workers are documented. Okay? So prevailing wage, that's a separate issue from prevailing wage, because they're already required to do that. So.
They're required to do that, but also not everybody is doing that.
But that's separate from prevailing wage.
When you document a certified payroll, you're signing on the line that that worker is a documented worker. You're verifying, again, you know, that that person, they have their social security number, they have all those things. So it's a backup.
We do that when we hire people, too. They're supposed to be checking that. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that's listening to the hearings, that there are other items where people have to, workers have to be verified.
And I would argue they work in conjunction, but then again, then the fact that now the state requires that kind of flies in the face of the argument that the paperwork is overbearing, because that in itself requires a significant amount of paperwork for the contractor, whether he's bidding a $25 job or a $150,000 job. So again, it goes back to, but one way you confirm E-Verify, one of the ways, one of the ways to confirm E-Verify is by.
It's online. It's online, and it does not cost anybody to.
And so is prevailing wage and certified payrolls. It does, it does, the way you confirm E-Verify and actually verify the E-Verify is through certified payrolls.
I would like to say something about E-Verify, too. I mean, I'd like to thank the committee for passing that in that bill, because that has helped.
Yes.
It has helped, but it isn't the save all. It has helped.
Right, but like I say, there are, there are other things that are governed, that govern anybody that employs people in the Commonwealth.
In the state.
Yes. A couple other things I just wanted to make sure, and looking at, talking about safety, and I guess, I guess just want to ask something about, you gentlemen are familiar with who governs workplace safety in the Commonwealth?
OSHA.
OSHA, yeah. That's right. So.
Right, and they will not come out to a project unless it's imminent danger.
And, and, I know, I worked in private industry. I managed a factory, and, you know, we actually had our own safety committee. So private companies do.
Was it a Lunchpail Safety Committee?
No.
Lunchboxes? You know, a lot of companies use them. It's just they get a little note in their, in their paycheck that says, you know, make sure you.
No, no, we actually had training programs and so forth, private, private industry. And again, I just want to say one thing for the record. You know, you have your members here, and I'm sure they're very skilled, they're trained, they work very hard, and I compliment all the workers in the Commonwealth. But there are also many people that are not organized labor, that work very hard and are very well-trained and do a good job. So I.
There are future members.
Well.
The very best of them get the workload for going.
And I would argue again that it's not about union or non-union, our program or their program. I think we do training better than anybody else. It's about the facts that all of these studies, 56, here's, you can, this is your copy, all of these studies show that in every one of the cases where prevailing rate was eliminated in the last, I don't know how many decades, in a state, that workplace accidents rose. Serious workplace accidents also rose even higher, so that the reality of it is that the expectation will be the same, because all of those other states also are governed by OSHA.
Well, I'd just like to, I'd just like to read from OSHA here. Data from the Occupational Safety and Health Administration shows that accident rates did not increase in states that were repealed their prevailing wage laws. Accident rates are, in fact, higher in prevailing wage states than in states that never had such a law. And, and I can give you, I can give you a copy.
I'd like to see that cited, because I believe that's actually taken a bit out of context, but I'll address that once I get the citing.
Yeah. Construction accident rates are scarcely affected by prevailing wage laws, since in the construction industry, union and non-union firms are subject to the same safety regulations and have the same incentives to minimize their workers' compensation insurance rates by maintaining a safe workplace. So again, we can, our goal for everybody, you know, whether you're, somebody employs people that are union workers or non-union workers, is safe employees. You want your employees to come to work and be productive and be able to get their job.
And we believe that you all feel that way, too.
Absolutely.
And we know that. I mean, we, that's a given. We don't have any question with that. But, but what happens is, the, the, the longer skilled worker, the person who's been in the industry for a while, if the, if the economy crashes like it did, you know, and people leave the industry, and they don't come back. And if, if you start cutting people's wages, or, and you can say that, you know, you just want to raise the threshold, but evidently, someone's saying in testimony that they're gonna have more money, so they've got to be cutting wages. That's the only thing I can think they're gonna be doing, or expecting lower wages. There's no proof that there will be lower wages. But those people that are, you know, more skilled and higher safety training will leave the industry or go to a state that has higher wages. We don't really want them leaving this state. We need to keep educating and training people to come into this industry. We have an aging workforce in the construction industry in Pennsylvania, and, you know, a lot of these people, I think the average age of a construction worker in Pennsylvania now is about 47 years old.
That's a lot younger than the average age of a farmer. Farmer's around 60.
I know. And they're both dangerous occupations. I mean, they're the two most dangerous occupations there are.
I've done both. I've done both, yes. And it's a lot of hard work.
I know, I know. And, you know, we really want to make sure that we're gonna get people to come into the industry. So how do we entice them? We don't entice them by lowering wages and lowering qualifications and lowering all those things. We, we entice them into the industry by giving them a career, a sustainable career.
Yeah.
And I, and we agree on that. We've talked about that.
Yeah, and again, what we look at, and I want to keep the focus on, on what we're talking about as far as the bills before us. You know, we're talking about prevailing wage bills, raising the threshold. There's already people that bid on the, on the $25,000 and below, the below $25,000 jobs. We simply want to say, let's raise that threshold to $190,000 for the rate of inflation. Certainly, we realize that the people, the same scope of work that was done in 1963 that was exempted for, for reasons, we just want to simply exempt that same scope of work in 2013. I think that's more than fair, and it's, it's not about the wages, because I certainly wouldn't want your members to come and have to work for what the members or what the workers made in 19, you wouldn't want your people working for 1963 wages, would you?
Nobody does.
No, absolutely. So I'm, we're simply saying, let's adjust the threshold, and really, that's what.
And we have discussed that in the prior meetings, and I explained that, you know, from 1961 to now, the industry has changed substantially. I mean, it used to take 20 people, and I use the example of the glass over the cafeteria in the Capitol, where you would have built scaffolding, and you would have had 30 people doing that project, 20, 20 people, I said, 20 people doing that project, because you would have to carry all the glass up through the scaffolding, you know, you had hand screwdrivers and, you know, hand drills and all those things, whereas today, you know, it would take 10 people to do that job. So modernization and mechanization has absorbed any inflation in that. And we also discussed the fact that, you know, an hour's work is worth an hour's pay.
If I could just go back to that, you know, somebody just got done testifying, but the labor is very, very little of the project. So if the labor is very little of the project, I fail to see how.
It is less now. That's what I just said.
No, no.
You're just 10 people instead of 20.
They're saying that labor is only a few percentage, a little bit, a few percent of the.
20 percent.
No, it wasn't even that much, because somebody said about saving 2 to 8 percent, 2 to 6.6 percent. It's right here.
That's the markup.
It's right here in.
That would be the, that would be the cost savings, not the actual.
It's, the 10 percent claim would result in a savings of $22,000 or 2.2 percent of the total job cost.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So here again, inflation, inflation hasn't taken all that up, because all the building materials and stuff is, you know, again, I think we're gonna disagree on whether we should raise the threshold or not. And I don't.
And one thing that I haven't done yet, and I'm still looking for Representative McGinnis' question on why the threshold was changed from 2,000 to $25,000. You asked that question, I think, at the meeting in State College, and I haven't come up with that yet. I haven't looked through all the testimony and all the talk on the floor from back then. It's pretty hard to find some of that stuff, but, but we still are, you know, I don't want you to think we forgot about your question.
If we, if you have a question to follow up on that, John, we'll let you when it's your turn. Okay? Fair enough?
Yes.
Okay. I'd just, I'd just like to get back to one thing that, you know, is also in Mr. Amros' testimony, and I have to, sorry, I have to get back to that page. And it's about, you don't know any contractor in Pennsylvania who's going to pass along tax savings to a school district, county, a city, township, a borough, or municipality. I would think that if they don't have to, if the bids come in all at a lower level because they don't have the mandate, and I'm not necessarily saying wages, because there's many other things that go into the cost of a prevailing wage project. I mean, there's, there's the engineering costs, which are a factor, the percentage of the job, and you have all the other things. So if the bids, if the bids are lower, and we just raise the threshold, and our bids come in lower, I don't think they're gonna have money to turn back, because they aren't gonna be bidding the higher bid. So I think there will be a savings to the, to the, to the taxpayer. And to say that our contractors just want to take advantage of the, and maybe you're not saying that, so I guess I'll give you.
Right.
An opportunity, because I sort of, maybe I misunderstood you, and if I did, I apologize, because I, I think the people that work in the Commonwealth and do work for us are honorable people, and I certainly don't, I want to give you an opportunity just to.
Certainly. I mean, no one is claiming that every contractor is unscrupulous. However, we all know that there is a percentage in every industry, regardless of what it is, that someone may take advantage of the law. What I'm tired of, Representative, is the soundbite that says that we're gonna pass along tax savings to taxpayers, and everyone is using it as a blanket statement, yet, notwithstanding your argument, which is a good one, I might add, I haven't seen any studies, I haven't seen any empirical data, I haven't seen any proof that any of these tax savings are gonna be realized. And until I see that, I'm gonna continue using that, because I am just wits' end in terms of the rhetoric that is flying. And, you know, we cannot continue this debate in, in sincere fashion. I want to see numbers, I want to see stats, I want to see proof that these savings are gonna be passed along.
Well, again, and it's been my point very often, that, and of course, I wasn't born in 1963 yet.
Nor was I.
I know you're a couple years younger than I am from the testimony of the last I, I know you're a couple of years younger than I am from the testimony of the last hearing, but anyhow, if you, if you went in nineteen sixty-three, I'll, I'll, I'll pick on the chairman here. If, if he went into the bank and said, hey, I'd like to build a house, you know, give me a mortgage, and the mortgage lender said, okay, here's twenty-five thousand dollars, go and build a house. You'd have built a pretty nice house. Fast forward to now, go into the, the mortgage lender and say, I'd like to build a house, and the mortgage lender gives you twenty-five thousand dollars to build your house, you're not gonna get much work done. We're, for, for these bills we're looking at right now, particularly seven ninety-six, we're saying, let's adjust that threshold, not even for, totally for inflation, but just up to the, to the point.
With all due respect, they weren't using that for houses back then, they were using that for those big government buildings, which you all go to every day in the Harrisburg area and throughout the state. There were no houses built at that threshold, it was the Capitol building, it was, you know, it was the Treasury building, it was all those buildings, you know. So, when you say that you build a house for twenty-five thousand dollars, they weren't looking at houses.
I'm simply saying the same scope, I'm using that as a comparison to say the same scope of work. We're asking a municipality, and we're saying, you can't do the same scope of work you could then without the mandates of the prevailing wage. And we're simply saying it's time to look at the law and adjust it, at least that's been my position. And, and you know, we can, we can continue to have the debate on that, but I just wanted to make sure that I got out there that, you know, safety's OSHA, you know. There are training programs, ABC does them, you know, the other contractors do them, and I, I've been, I've been to the training facility in Lebanon, I was with the chairman, they have a nice facility there. There's community colleges, there's a variety of ways that people that want to get into the trades can get training, and I, and I'd say quite good training, whether it's in one of your facilities or in a community college or the like. So, again, I think our workers in Pennsylvania are very skilled, whether or not they belong to a, a, an organized labor entity, but I just, I just want to say, I want to focus the debate on, we all want the best for Pennsylvania, we want to make sure that we're consistent with our policy, and I think it would be consistent to raise the threshold and take a look at the maintenance. And with that, I'll turn it over to the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, once again, thank you. Mr. Sirianni, just to make a point, it has nothing to do with this, but when the Navy closed the Navy Yard in Philadelphia, we had a great collection of skilled workers. When Caverna came in five years later, we couldn't find enough welders to meet their needs, because within that four, five-year period, all the best welders were gone. So, we had to do, and training in the company to get, to get, get the skills back up to the level it was. So, if we don't have jobs, then we will lose the skilled workers we need in Pennsylvania. Mr. Coontz, you've, you've always been, I've always listened to you when it comes to the Youngwood and Evanboro cases, we've heard a lot of talk about that, how, just, you know, just a little bit of maintenance, we need a little bit of maintenance. Would you explain what actually happened, because I know you were involved in, in those cases?
Well, I, I think with the, the Youngwood Borough, I was, it was the one I was involved in, and actually, that wasn't a maintenance decision that goes back for decades. That was really a much newer decision by certain people within the, several administrations to kind of pump up, redefine what maintenance is on milling and paving. And, and so then that went to the State Supreme Court, which found that, in fact, that that was covered by the Prevailing Wage Act. So, the change actually, in definition of maintenance, was an illegal change to begin with. Then in that case of the Youngwood Borough decision, you know, there's a claim that it was a twenty-six, I believe twenty-six thousand dollar difference in the actual cost from when it was done without rates to the paving that was done once it had prevailing rates, and I would argue that that is a big unknown. In fact, the twenty-six thousand dollars was significantly higher than the actual difference between the wages and benefits that the employees received when they were paid and what the prevailing rate was. There was a significant inflation in that rate by the contractor, which leads one to ask, what would the contractor done had he bid that under rates at the beginning? And my argument is, and I think you've heard it here, then in most cases, it wouldn't have made a difference. He would have bid them in order to re, to receive a, a profit, and that much of the profit that he got in the earlier bid went in his pocket. But then it was redefined, and now we hear about struggling municipalities. Again, I, I really don't think this is about Youngwood Borough or the, the sidewalk case, this is really more about a funding crisis the prevailing wage is not gonna solve. You have a significant infrastructure funding crisis in this state that has not kept up with inflation for decades, not even close. When you think construction cost inflation fifteen years ago, twenty or, or less were thirty-five percent. And I'm not talking labor costs, I'm talking material costs. I hear quotes, again at your last hearing, in the change in the price of a ton of asphalt. If you go back and look at those periods when they compare, it was because significant changes in the cost of oil. As a result, significant changes in the cost of manufacturing asphalt, and the manufacture of asphalt first at a batch plant's not covered by prevailing wages. It's only when they put it on the ground that it's covered, and in fact, is labor, is not labor intense, it does not take much labor to make asphalt. It is the batch plant and materials that do that, and the costs are in, in the emulsion, in the aggregate, and in the cost of heating the asphalt to a certain temperature, cooking that, turning it, electricity in order to pump asphalt out at the end of that batch plant. That's the real cost that drives the cost of paving a road. But the Youngwood Borough decision, you know, I, I will, I will use the guesstimates that everybody else seems to do. It seems to be very effective here, because those are the numbers everybody's buying, not studies, but guesstimates, that my guesstimate after thirty-seven years in the industry is that that bid would have come in about the same, had there been prevailing wages.
Thank you. I agree, and when I, we talked at the last, not at this hearing, the last bunch of township and commissioners, and I, I'd said, I agree with them. They said, we can't keep cutting in Harrisburg and, and then expect them to find ways to make up for this, so I did agree. So, I, I told them, that's why I've been voting against the budgets recently, because they keep getting cut, and we, we need new funding sources, and we, we have to help the locals. And just by, on this new, you know, this is the new buzzword that somehow getting rid of prevailing wage will help them out of their troubles. It's not even close to, of getting them out, and it's, I think it'll be bad for workers and bad for the state. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No matter how, how many times you cut a steak, eventually you run out of steak to eat, it's just that simple. Thank you.
Representative Truss?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you guys for your testimony, it's good to see you again. Yeah, I tend to focus on numbers in these things, and actually, Abe, you had commented about, you've never heard of a case where savings would get passed along to taxpayers, and you're absolutely right, it doesn't matter whether it's Republicans or Democrats in charge, every time we find a way to save money, we spend it on something else. And what I've been hearing consistently in these hearings is that if we weren't spending quite so much money on the cost of a project, if we could save money on projects, whether it's, I'm gonna come back to where we can save it, but if we could save money on projects, what we would spend it on is more projects. And so I wanted to drive into some of your numbers here, you mentioned, you know, on a million-dollar project, the labor would be two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Does that include payroll taxes, like social security and Medicare tax that are paid by the business?
Yes, sir, that would, that would be included.
That's included in the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, and is the, does that two-hundred-and-twenty thousand include the taxes that the businesses pay to, for unemployment taxes?
That would be a cost that is determined by an hourly rate. All of that would be included in an hourly rate, which would also include healthcare and pension.
But you're saying all of that's in, in this two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar number?
It's in the twenty-two percent, and of course, I'm using a hypothetical there, but it is in the percentage that is used in the calculation.
Okay. I'm a little skeptical, I'll, I'll take your word for it.
The rest is materials, engineering fees, things like that?
And we heard earlier, a case where a project increased in cost from a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, another sixty-nine thousand was added to it. Forty-six thousand of it went to employees, another nineteen thousand went to taxes and insurance, and another twenty-six thousand went to, you know, overhead of the fact that it's a prevailing wage project. So, again, I'm still trying to understand how, because I, I believe both sides. I believe you guys, when you say the cost of labor is in the twenty percent range, but I also believe that the cost of the projects goes up thirty to forty percent when we apply prevailing wage, because of the compounding effect of, when you pay somebody more, now you have to collect more taxes, and there's the business, you know, that business is paying more taxes, a business owner is paying, so, is half of social security taxes, he's paying his half of the Medicare tax, he's paying the unemployment tax, he's paying more for workers' compensation, he's paying more for healthcare, and I'm wondering if you're including all of the employer costs in that two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars? Or if you're just including the costs, you know, on, on your Schedule C, you've got your cost of labor, the amount that actually went to the employee before the deductions in his paycheck?
I thought the questionable part of that testimony was the extra twenty-six thousand dollars they threw on top, that the company charged on top for handling fees or whatever it was. There was no definition of what that was for, because they had already done a payroll, they had already done all those things, it wouldn't have cost any more if they only did it once.
Well, that's, yeah, I agree with that.
Whether it was prevailing wage or not.
That's something I'd like to dig into, is understand better.
Can I interrupt, and, and according to contractors, and I deal with them every day, and we have about six hundred contractors that we deal with. When I, when I'm talking about the average cost of twenty to twenty-two percent on most construction projects, that is the entire labor, wage cost. So, that includes everything you're talking about, that's considered part of the total wage cost. I'm not talking about the package the employee receives, I'm talking about labor costs. So, all of that is included by the contractor when he does his bidding calculates. Now, I, I, I sat back and, and I, I'm still trying to figure this out, but in the situation that you talked about, the differences were seventy-two percent, do the math. So, there's a seventy-two percent difference, and when you're talking about the difference between a total wage cost, I don't care what it is, I, I'm not sure what the high wage would have had to have been, and the low wage would have had to have been to get a seventy-two percent total project cost that large. I, I'm just, from my experience, and I, I'm gonna go back and do some, sit down and do some math on this, I don't have time now. I started back there, I got to the seventy-two percent and went, wow. It, it, the math just doesn't work. Now, I'm not doubting the numbers they gave, I'm just wondering how they, how they got to those numbers and how that contractor got to those numbers. That's the question that I wonder, and the twenty-six thousand by itself, though significant, when you tack it to the ninety, ninety-five thousand dollar difference, still there's a lot of money there I can't do the math on, and, and just think about it, total wage cost, but putting everything else into it, those are small percentages of the wage, hourly wage amount, what you put in for unemployment compensation, the FICA contribution, any other thing, the unemployment, the use, the employees you see contribution, the employers you see contribution is capped, so for anything fairly high, the employer doesn't pay any more on unemployment because his, his, his contribution is actually capped at a fairly low value. I'm just, I'm struggling here trying to do the math on that myself, it's a good question, because.
If I may give you an example, we were involved in a court case on TIF financing, whether it was tax dollars or not, and it was the Penn National Insurance case. It, it went to Supreme Court as well. So, I was at the pre-bid meetings for a while, until I was escorted out, but I'm sitting in there, and they told all the contractors, you guys. They told all the contractors to bid the project both ways. They wanted to bid it prevailing wage and non-pervailing wage, and they did, and we had several union contractors that bid on that project. They only bid their rate, which was the prevailing rate for the area, but several of the non-union contractors bid it prevailing wage and non-pervailing wage. Okay, the lowest bidder on the project, now this was not, at that time, designated as a state or publicly funded project, it was considered a private project because there was pending litigation. So, the, the lowest bidder was in about seven hundred thousand, and I can give you the court case where you can review these numbers, was around seven hundred thousand dollars or something like that. Oh, no, there was, there was actually, yeah, around seven hundred thousand dollars for the project. Let me correct that, it was a seven, he was seven hundred thousand dollars lower than the person that got the project, and he was a union contractor, they were a union contractor. So, the lowest bid came in seven hundred thousand dollars lower than the third bidder that got the job. The second lowest bidder was another union contractor, and it was given to a non-union contractor from Lancaster County, and I have no problem with that contractor. They, you know, Penn National Insurance at that time could give it to whoever they wanted to, because they weren't required to give it to the lowest responsible bidder at the time. So, that project was done by that contractor, they hired all the subs, and they did the, you know, hired the electrical contractors and the refrigeration contractors, the flooring contractors and all that. At the end of the court case, when it was deemed to be prevailing wage, that contractor submitted a figure to adjust for the difference in prevailing wage, and he was already the third bit, highest bidder, you know, he was three hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars higher than the lowest bidder, who bid it with prevailing wage. So, a lot of it depends on how much work there is at the time, the availability of manpower, and, you know, just how much work you have at, at the time as an individual contractor. When, when the economy was booming, prices were substantially higher in this, in this Commonwealth on public projects. There were fifty, sixty, sixty projects that you couldn't find bidders on. Now you put a project out for bid, everybody and their brothers bidding on it, so everybody's giving you their best price to get the job. You know, that's the time when you really should be doing the most work with public funds, is when there's a surplus of contractors available and a surplus of manpower, you're gonna get the best deal. If you wait till everything's booming again, you're gonna pay another premium. So, you know, when you're doing budgets, you're thinking of budgets for this, for the taxpayers of the state, you might want to kick a little more money in. You might not want to shut Plan Con down for the schools where the government's not reimbursing the school districts to build construction projects, like it's being done right now. It would be the optimum time to do the school construction, not stop it, or not cause it to slow down. So, that's the, and I'm gonna get you that court case, so you can look through those numbers, because it's been, it was ten, twelve years ago since that happened, and my numbers may be a little bit off. But, but the whole, it's an actual court case that documents that, so.
At, at the State College hearing, we, I, I made light of a conversation about a tree trimming crew, and there was a, talk about the, the person operating the flags was being billed, not, not paid, but billed at sixty-five dollars an hour. Do you know what the, what would be a typical rate that would be paid to somebody?
Abe would know the, that would be the labor's job up there, Abe would know that rate.
Well, depending, of course, on the, on, on where it took place, for instance, in eastern Pennsylvania, if it's, it was, if it was in State College, you're looking at a rate of between sixteen and twenty dollars.
Sixteen and twenty, okay.
That's correct. Pardon me? Yes, sir. That is correct.
No, that includes benefits, prevailing wage includes benefits.
Sixteen dollars?
Sixteen to twenty, sir, yes.
That includes benefits.
Yes, sir.
For, for labor in State College, he'd be, he'd be about right, yep. I have operators that are not much higher than that.
They would beg to differ on that, but that's okay.
What I, what I'm trying to illustrate, though, is, the worker's being paid sixteen to twenty dollars an hour, and he's being billed at sixty-five dollars an hour. So, the effect of an increase in, in wage rates has a leveraged effect or a multiplied effect that has, that's how a small increase or decrease in a, in a worker's pay can result in a thirty to forty percent increase or decrease in a project cost. And, and I, and I, and I'm not expecting you to answer this again, I keep coming back in my mind, I keep seeing, I keep thinking that we are, by trying to pay people more, we are taking a lot of money, by paying workers a little bit more, we're taking a lot of money away from municipalities and potentially employing a lot less people. So, we're by, so we're paying a few people more and employing a lot less people, and all this other money, the difference between that sixty-five dollars an hour and that sixteen to twenty dollars an hour, we're not a hundred percent sure where it goes.
I would argue again, it's, it goes back to the Youngwood Borough situation in a very similar, say, I believe that was the same contractor, and the second bid, which was significantly higher, was after the fact, when he found out that he could inflate his, his wages. Now, that would suggest that all that money was going to profits, not to employees. So, same contractor that also bid it significantly, I think it's after the fact. Again, this is the problem sometimes when you hear this, well, after, after someone said it has to be prevailing wage, this is the amount that the project changed because it was bid after the fact, is that that individual contractor, and there are very reputable contractors out there, and then there are some that are less than. And I'm not gonna pass judgment on individual contractors, but I, you know, again, it's after the fact, it seems like the door, the barn door is now open, I can do what I want to do to try to get that project, because you're gonna have to do that.
I would like to, if you don't mind, in an effort of keeping people on time in this hot room, get to Representative McGinnis, if you don't mind. Always done, thank you.
Thank you.
I was hoping you'd go that way too. Mr. Amoros, you expressed skepticism or outright disbelief that cost savings will get passed on to the taxpayers, and I, I, I want to cure you of such skepticism. It's, if you have a competitive bidding process, the savings have to get passed on to the taxpayers, is that not the case? For example, if we had a five hundred dollar project, or let's say, let's say a project that could be done for four hundred, but the law. project that could be done for 400, but the law mandated we pay 500, the cost to taxpayers would be $500. Now, if we get rid of the law and have a competitive bidding process, what happens to the price?
I would have to argue that you have a fair competing process right now.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, if we save taxpayers' costs, if we save costs on projects, they will get passed on to the taxpayer.
But there's nothing in any of this legislation that guarantees that. There's no guarantee of that.
And the best competitive bidding process known to mankind is the free market system, which we should extend beyond the relationship between public and private sector, but throughout our economy.
Well, let me argue the point that we currently have a fair market competitive process, and it's already in place because every contractor could submit those wage rates to the Department of Labor and Industry, and then it would settle itself. But we're getting back to that original premise that not everyone participates, for whatever reason, in providing the certified payroll, the wage rates, and their projects to the Department of Labor and Industry. I'm not so sure we'd be having this argument.
We have a dispute.
If I may finish, sir, if I may finish.
Well, you're off point here.
No, I'm not off point. No, you mentioned a fair market competitive process, and I'm addressing your point. I don't think we'd be here arguing this case or these points if every contractor in Pennsylvania would take it upon himself or herself to provide due diligence, provide the wage rates, the certified payroll to the Department of Labor and Industry.
But that's not a free market. When you have to report what you're doing to Big Brother, that's the opposite of a free market.
It's also called the law representative.
My point to you was simply your assertion that cost will not get passed, cost savings will not get passed to taxpayers. In a competitive bidding process, they must. They have to. Or else you're not running your bids correctly. Now, let me move on to Mr. Sirianni because I want to clear up one misunderstanding. You said, "I ask why the threshold for prevailing wage was increased from $2,000 to $25,000 in 1960s."
From 61 to 63. I thought that's what your question was.
No, it wasn't. It was, why is there any threshold at all?
Right, it should be zero.
In your view, yes, but I suspect, if you do the research, you'll find out that they found this an onerous burden to small municipalities who do not have the economies of scale that state and large cities have. And so they wanted to give those people a fair chance to run their governments. Hence, the threshold of $25,000, which is so far out of date, that it just makes sense to adjust it for the cost of living.
You know, I could feel bad for some of those associations, like the boroughs and townships and the County Commissioners Association and the township supervisors. If they weren't paying their director $200,000 a year and their lobbyist $165,000 a year, and on and on and on with dues that come from my pocket, you know, and no one's looking into that, except for, I guess, Mr. Keller here, which I'm really grateful to the fact that someone's going to start looking into this, you know, and we're going to look at a guy who makes $20,000 a year as a construction worker? Come on. And you know what?
Let me go back to your original comments, and I know you spoke extenuating. Quick question. Your comment was, and this is almost verbatim, that the prevailing wages are not out of line with the market wage by and large.
That's correct.
And many of your people testified the same. So why have a prevailing wage? It's having no impact.
I don't like to go down this road, but I'm going to go down this road, okay? I think it's fair for workers to get prevailing wage, and it's as fair as you getting prevailing wage. You get the same rate as a legislator from Philadelphia.
Not quite true.
Your base rate is.
That's not going to me personally, but I get your point.
But we don't look at that. We're only looking at the construction worker. And that irritates me. Because the free market could adjust that for you, and you could get the average wage for Altoona.
I'd be in favor of that.
Then send it back. And you know what? Don't send it to the charity you choose. Send it to the one I choose. Because that's not your money to choose with if you really believe that. That's the taxpayers' money.
I'm all for letting the taxpayers decide this matter. Absolutely.
And actually, your argument about eliminating prevailing wage doesn't, does not hold water for one single reason. The original intent of prevailing wage was to keep transient, low-paid, no-benefit workers from the South from coming.
African Americans, we can be blunt here.
Well, no, it was more than that. It was whites from Louisiana and Mississippi. It had nothing to do with race, and I take exception to that. But if that's the position you want, that's fine. I can live with that on a record.
Why would you even say that?
But what I'm going to say is that the whole object was to keep that from coming from the South.
Okay. Again, I don't want to interject any misconceived notions or anything else. This is strictly about what our feelings are on prevailing wage and what we think is the right thing.
And that's why I'm saying, the argument here is that still today, you could get people that are working in substandard conditions, which does happen in the industries that we're talking about, all along the Gulf Coast and throughout the South, and contractors bring them up here. They do do that now on some private sector work and significantly undermine. And I do remember, actually, this committee having a problem with all the Texans in here working on the Marcella shale fields, and to your credit. And I thought that was a great thing. And that was as much driven by your party as it was the Democrats. Because they were coming in here, taking jobs from Pennsylvanians with substandard wages and limited, if not no benefits, and taking the money home and buying their TVs and refrigerators in Texas or Louisiana. We have won a good part of that battle, though it continues. Without prevailing wages, without the incentive of prevailing wages to keep that from happening, I will tell you that that will happen in the road and bridge industry. Now, if you feel that it's okay that we bring in out-of-state workers to work for next to nothing and take jobs from Pennsylvanians, then supporting the elimination of prevailing wage makes sense. If you do not, I believe that.
There's hidden costs there, too.
There's costs.
If they go back there and they get laid off here, they're taking our unemployment funds with them. And they're taking 100 percent.
Oh, yeah.
They're taking the highest rate with them. So that completes our fund. You know, it's a very big.
Again, I look at, you know, if we adjust the threshold and allow these municipalities to do more work, I look at that as a jobs bill. Because now these people that are only working eight months of the year or six months of the year will work more months out of the year. And we could make the argument, too, that a prevailing wage would then inflate the unemployment benefit and cost the person that's working the entire year more money to pay that.
You can't control the weather in a construction industry representative. That's the bigger reason that they don't work 12 months out of the year.
Well, and there's the limit that the Department of Transportation only allows.
And the Department of Transportation doesn't let you pave, but only certain months of the year. There are a lot of limitations.
But as far as other works, but, you know, again, I appreciate your testimony. Thank you, gentlemen, and we look forward to seeing you again in a couple of weeks. Oh, excuse me, gentlemen. Excuse me, gentlemen. If you could, just, Representative Lucas, I didn't.
I also want to say for the record, as I support unions, I've hired unions, I've worked on prevailing wage jobs. This bill, the main bill that's only raising the threshold to $100,000, I really and truly do not believe it'll affect you that much. We're talking about small projects, projects for the most part you guys don't want to do anyways. I know that because I bid on thousands of jobs, thousands of jobs, and some of them over $25,000 didn't get done because they couldn't afford to do it, because it went to prevailing wage. I also want to say one thing, too. We talk about lowest bidders, and my expertise says the lowest bidder on a project is usually the guy trying to figure out what he forgot.
That's true. What he missed.
May I respond? First of all, we represent all workers, union or non-union. And you can tell if they're making a decent wage or have health care, have any kind of benefits, it's because there was a union somewhere, somewhere involved. As far as the small projects, again, I work for HVAC, people that work HVAC, those contracts are oftentimes below $100,000. Plumbing is oftentimes below $100,000, electrical painting and so on. So those jobs are there. Basically, the argument that's not going to get settled here is, we believe that prevailing, that does not increase the cost of a job. Ergo, if it doesn't increase the cost of a job, what difference does a threshold make? So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. If we could have the next panel come forward, please. It is hot in here.
We'll even pay prevailing wage for this.
I can't do HVAC.
We'll continue along here. If you wouldn't mind just giving a brief introduction of yourselves, and then you can start with the testimony.
Yes, I'm Speaker Maggie, I'm the city manager here for the city of Johnstown, and also a member of the Legislative Committee for the Tax Management Committee.
My name is Steve Seawalk. I'm Office Manager of the East Group, Johnstown Engineering Fund. And we do a lot of the engineering for the city and also numerous municipalities here in Cambria and Somerset County.
Thank you. You can begin when you're ready.
First off, I'd like to say, as a member of the Pennsylvania Municipal League and also as a city manager, I support the passage of House Bill 665 and 796. I know you guys have heard a lot of testimony today, and I guess I'm here to kind of just bring it back to center of what the original intent is. And the original intent being redefining the definition of maintenance within these bills to include fixing of potholes, fixing of curbs, laying of asphalt, milling work, and raising shoulders, you know, and also to include bridges in that. With this, we want to consider that, that it doesn't go from, that it does go from the $25,000 threshold that was established in 1961, I believe, to the $185,000. You know, we're not looking at trying to take, you know, it's hard as a city manager that I try to keep all of the constituents happy. Many of my constituents are union constituents and many are non-union. I have many contractors that approach me about city work and say that they just simply can't make the prevailing wage. You know, I think that we have to look for ways, especially in today's economy. The city of Johnstown currently has 10% unemployment. And since the closures of Bethlehem Steel, we have had higher unemployment than the rest of the state of Pennsylvania. People often ask me, when is the city of Johnstown going to come out of the recession? And I say, I don't even know if we've come out of the depression yet. And it's very scary for us as a city that's been an Act 47 community for 24 years, now going into their fifth recovery plan to try to reinvent themselves. And some of the few jobs that we do have, and, you know, we don't want to turn away, essentially. And we're trying to keep good residents here. What I do know is, as an Act 47 community, our workforce has shrunk, our public works especially, from roughly 110 individuals approximately 15 years ago, we're down to 27 individuals working on our public works department at this time. At a time when you had 100 individuals, we have 100 miles of public road. So that was one individual per, you know, one mile of public road. We were able to keep up with public works projects. We were able internally to do that. Because of the shifts in demand, you know, we now are not able to do that and put many of those projects out to bid. But what I do watch happening is, more and more, many of those projects are coming in at a higher cost. With that higher cost, and I heard a lot of discussion about how taxpayers don't receive the benefit. Well, in our budget, we have to spend that. We get community development block grants that are slated for certain issues. So if I'm slating $200,000 for road resurfacing, it has to be used for road resurfacing. If 20% of that is going away, you know, it may not seem like much to many people, that's two to four roads in Johnstown that could have been paved, two to four alleys that could have been paved. And over the course of, you know, 10 years, you know, you're looking at 20 roads. And if you're one of the people that live on that road, you know, I've heard the arguments here that, you know, three to $4 or five to $6 in a wage doesn't make a difference. But if that's your street or your grandmother's street that has accessibility and mobility problems, it does make a difference. So nobody on behalf of the Municipal League or the city of Johnstown wants to see anybody lose their jobs and is, you know, against, you know, union. This town was built on union wages. But what we are for is that we need to come into the future, essentially, and raise those standards and increase the definition of maintenance. You know, we're not trying to, you know, exclude anybody. Everybody still gets the right to bid. But these are from a, you know, and we're considered a city. And I heard people talk about, you know, boroughs and townships don't have the abilities to, you know, craft these types of materials and bids. Well, guess what? The city doesn't either. I have to go out and pay for an engineer to put together these bid packages, and then additional costs that's spent in engineering and legal bills, legal bills and fees in order to pay to put these bid packages together. So there's a cost that goes with all of that. So I guess the biggest thing that we're looking at is, I'm seeing that a recent cost estimate from the Journal of Education and Finance is that it's 10 to 17 percent increase of construction costs for every bid that goes out for prevailing wage. Right now, we are under a consent order with the state of Pennsylvania and the Department of Environmental Protection. The city is cooperating fully with the Department of Environmental Protection, and we are in the process of rehabbing and upgrading our entire sewer system under 100 miles of road. This was an unfunded mandate. So we are looking at doing $100 million of construction, which includes road reconstruction and resurfacing throughout the entire city. At $100 million over 10 years, if we could have any of that back in the 10 to 17 range, that's $17 million that would go back to the payers of Johnstown. And I don't know anybody in my municipality that would serve that back. You know, it's an unfunded mandate, and we need any relief that we can get. So for us to be able to take care of small projects that would get us out of the site, so to speak, of the DEP would have been huge. You know, instead, we are, you know, putting more onto the infrastructure of the state of Pennsylvania, and thank you for continuing to fund the Penn Vest programs. But if we had a lot more small projects that we could accomplish, the city probably wouldn't have had to have gone to a consent order. You know, it's, I realize that this is very difficult, and it's a difficult decision for everybody sitting in this room. But I think that doing this by incremental change and not throwing the baby out with the bathwater, by just changing the threshold and definition, makes a huge difference in helping local municipalities.
Hi, my name's Steve Seawalk. As I said before, as Kristin mentioned, we're working with the city as their engineer, doing a lot of this work. One of the things in regard to the House Bill 796, the $25,000, I did a little comparison from the Engineer News Record magazine, which is a nationally recognized engineering magazine, and it gives cost comparisons so you can go backwards in time to see what construction rates are then and now. And I did a comparison of the 1963 rate when it was set to $25,000. If you go through the Engineering News Record, that would equillate to $265,000 at this day and age. And that, those are construction cost comparisons through that Engineering News Record. So that's something I just wanted to bring up, that it, we can see it is, it is behind the times. It's been a long time. Kristin hit on a lot of the larger projects here. I also work with a lot of the smaller municipalities, the townships and boroughs throughout the area. The threshold is low, and it does keep a lot of smaller contractors from working on, working on small jobs. You know, the $25,000 range doesn't provide for a lot of construction. And this range with a lot of the smaller contractors who don't have office staffs where they can keep two kind of rate jobs, it deters them away from doing smaller work and smaller jobs. So all this has to usually be put into larger jobs, and it cuts a lot of those smaller guys out of this, out of some of these, you know, smaller items and repair jobs. In regards to the House Bill 665, the maintenance work, in discussing, as it was one of the larger townships here in the area, Adams Township, they have a budget of about approximately $1.5 million a year. They spend $200,000 to $300,000 a year in repaving, you know, all street work, et cetera. Discussing that with them, they indicated they could probably save about $75,000 a year in their rates if they were to go to non-pervailing rate. That's about 5% of their budget, okay? And talking with other contractors and that, everybody seems to want to get around, how much is the savings? I've talked to some contractors where they say it's a 5% savings. Some say it's a third, you know, it's around 35%. So you're still in this, a substantial, substantial saving. you know, it's around 35%, so you're still in this, a substantial, substantial savings there from a prevailing rate job to a non-pervailing rate job, so, you know, you could arguably argue between a solid 10 and 20% on those, those savings from, from a rate to a non-rate job. One of the things, with the House Bill 665 going to other miscellaneous items there, such as guardrail, curbing, storm pipes, inlets, and that, those are a lot of the work items, particularly throughout our older communities that are, you know, particularly here in the city, most of those facilities are very old, you know, 50 to 100 years old, and a lot of them are in dire need of repair, as Kristen mentioned, we're doing a lot of that here, and, as she said, unfunded, you know, there's not a lot of grant money out there to fund this at this point, and, you know, the, any savings, you know, to raise this threshold, to get the small, you know, some of the smaller contractors in, to do some odds and ends, will greatly, greatly make savings across, to not only the larger municipalities, but particularly the smaller municipalities and boroughs. So, thank you.
Thank you for the testimony, I just have a couple of questions, and one of them is in regard to the cost, I know we've been talking a lot about the cost of a project, and how much of its labor and so on. The question I have is, the cost associated with the bid, putting a bid package together, is that a factor of the cost of the entire project, or is part of that a factor of the cost of the entire project that's put together?
What I've been told by different solicitors is that, that $25,000 is all cost associated with that project. You know, so if, you know, the engineer's fees, legal fees, it's a project cost, that's what I've been told by solicitors, I couldn't, you know, I don't, I haven't seen that in writing, but that's what I've always been operated on, as a total cost. So it'd be the engineer's fees, you know, if I have to go out and design 250 feet of storm sewer to put out the bid, my fees for putting out that bid package, et cetera, are included in that $25,000, so that greatly reduces the allowable construction cost, something like that.
But that is not a factor of, if the, it's not like 10% of the project, so the project's $25,000, it's $2,500, if it's $100,000, it's $10,000, it's a set fee for putting that package together?
Typically, what you'll see is, even through the federal guidelines, say Rural Utilities Service, they have a standard fee, you know, if the construction is estimated at $100,000, the, the basic design fee, which includes bidding, is, say, 8%. That percentage change, changes as the construction, you know, as the construction costs go up, the percentage comes down, and a lot of that is because, to bid out a $10 million project or a $100,000 project, it's the same amount of work to prepare the contract, to advertise it, to take the questions, it's the same amount of work, whether it's 10 million or 100,000, so it's not a, you know-
It's not a fixed percentage, the percentage is on a sliding scale?
Yes, that's correct, it's not, it's a, it's a level of effort to do that work, it's the same, the matter of the cost of the construction.
Okay. The other question I have is, and this is probably for Kristen, maybe you can help me with this, the amount of projects that you would normally do, or typically do that are below $25,000, do you know the number of projects that would be in a year's time?
In a year's time, I'd say I probably do between five to 10 under $25,000, you know, but if a small project, say, was increased, the threshold was increased, we would be handling our projects much differently, and we would be handling our scope of work for construction much differently throughout the year.
Okay, so how many do you do that are between 25 and, say, 100, which is what House Bill 796 proposes to move it to?
I would say somewhere between 10 and 20 a year.
In addition to the, the other, the lower-cost ones?
Correct. Most of the time, if we come across one that's going to require putting a full bid package to put together, we scrap it, and it has to then sit and wait until we are, say, going for a larger-scale construction project. For example, I mean, if I have a small sewer utility break, I know it's below $25,000, I can call and get a couple bids from a couple different contractors, put that into motion the next week. If it's over $25,000, I know I'm going to have to pay prevailing wage, that, then we're going to look at, okay, as a part of reconstruction and restoration, that might sit for another year, to be put as a part of a larger package.
So you, in your estimation, you'd be able to do more projects per year if the-
Oh, absolutely, and much, much more efficiently also, you know, so that the taxpayers are seeing better efficiency in government and getting better satisfaction. It's just that anything that's, that's over $25,000, we look at putting into a large scale when we're doing replacement of an entire, you know, right now, we've sectioned the city off into, I believe, 10 areas, and we're doing 10 areas across the city for sewer reconstruction. So if we have a situation that's over $25,000, we're going to wait until we're doing that section of the city.
Okay.
Instead of just addressing the problem at that moment.
Thank you. Chairman Keller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Denny and Mr. Seawalk, in both of your testimonies, Ms. Denny, you said, you talked to small contractors who can't make the prevailing wage, and Mr. Seawalk, you said, many of the small, local contractors do not bid work because they cannot afford the prevailing wage for their employees. You understand the, the wages are set by the Department of Labor.
Correct.
So, if you're a small company or a large company, you should be satisfied with the prevailing wage, because your cost for labor will be X. Everybody will be bidding the labor cost out at the same rate. I still don't understand why we keep hearing, small companies cannot afford the prevailing wage, when they're going to, when they put their bid together, they're going to put X in as the labor cost, the same as the giant company's going to put in, because the wage is set by the Department of Labor. I don't, I don't, I don't get it, is, am I missing something?
I, one of the things, when I talk to some, when I say smaller, these are considerably smaller, they don't have the office staff, okay, to put together, they work for a lot of individuals, okay?
You said the prevailing wage, I have it right here, cannot afford the prevailing wage for their employees. As, I'm not talking about the office staff, the prevailing wage is set by the Department of Labor. Everybody has to pay the same rate, that's the purpose of it. So everybody, when it comes to bid out, I have to bid for cement finishers, cement finishers, $25 an hour. If I have two trucks, or I have 200 trucks, it, the state says, this is what you have to pay those people. And we keep hearing that, you know, that the rate is making this impossible to get projects done. But the rate is set, everybody's paying the same rate.
I think the difference that we're talking about here would have more to do with the presentation of bid packages and things to that effect.
That's fine, but that's not what you said.
Well, I, I'm sorry if there was misrepresentation.
Yeah, you said that they can't make it because they can't pay the prevailing wage. Now, if you could say that engineering services are too high, we're putting the bid package together is too high, maybe that's something else we could look at, but to have people constantly come and say, the prevailing wage is too high, they can't afford it, it doesn't make sense to me. The prevailing wage is set, and if those small contractors would actually do what they're supposed to do, and send in their, what they pay the wages, the prevailing wage for that area would probably come down. But nobody does what they're supposed to do, they just come in here and say, the wages are too high.
Not disagreeing with any of that, sir, you know, I think-
What'd you say?
I said, not disagreeing with any of that, sir.
Did you get that?
But, but what-
I would agree with him, too, that, you know, the wages should come down.
They should, they would. If they, if they participate it, but they don't participate.
But Chairman, we're not even talking about wages, we're simply talking about the threshold of the projects we can do in the whole package.
No, we're, I am back to the, what the original intent of this is, the whole prevailing wage subject. We have Roy from the parliamentarian that says I can speak on that.
They continue to speak.
Okay, thank you. Now, I want to ask, Mr. Seawalk, would you consider your 8% on small projects, and, and probably less than that on bigger projects, is that prevailing wage?
No.
That's not the prevailing wage of what everybody gets in the area? All, all engineers don't get 8% on those projects?
No, that's, that's just off of a federal curve, other, there's other that you can negotiate your contracts, depending on the complexity of the, of the, of the work also.
And Ms. Denny, how much would you estimate that you would actually save on the labor end? If, of course, everybody keeps saying 30%, 20%, and we keep saying 20% in the labor, nobody's going to do it for zero, so it's a small percentage of what the actual, you could save on the direct labor costs are. Do you have any estimate of what the Johnstown could save?
Not with me, I do not, sir, but what I do know is, if, if we have the ability to give $5 back to a taxpayer, we have to at least investigate that.
But these, but we are providing a service by doing this, that's what we're doing, we're making sure Pennsylvania taxpayers get a decent rate, and we're making sure that public work projects have the best workers on it, and this is, and this is the law that does it.
None of that we're contending, the only thing we're asking is that you consider raising the threshold.
Or sending more money to the locals.
Well, I'm not going to make enemies in this room selling that, but-
You don't want more money? I've been up there fighting for more money for you.
Believe me, I would love to have more money, but I also know that you guys are facing a lot of the same, you know, issues that local municipalities are with legacy costs, and pensions, and existing debt, and we're all in the same boat.
We are all in the same boat, and hopefully, we can increase revenues and get out of this boat. Thank you for your testimony, I don't want to be, to be smart.
Okay, every now and again, you got to beat up on the-
But that's, but I have to get that straight, everybody keeps saying wages, but the wages are the same, that's, I'm just trying to make that point constantly.
Right, I think it's just the whole package in general, and to be very honest.
Okay, well, then maybe we should be looking at the engineering cost.
Hey, I don't mind that either, but I think the package in general, that they don't, you know, the average, a small firm of five to 10 guys that does excavating, or does, you know, small residential work, that they have a lot of equipment, but they don't have, you know-
Expertise.
Exactly, they're not going to have somebody that can, can walk through the bid packages with them.
But it's not the wages of the workers that are driving that? It's their inability to fill out the forms?
I wouldn't even call it inability, I'd say lack of resources. There's a lot of things within the city that I could do, but I don't have the resources of the staff to be able to put towards that.
Well, maybe we should be looking at how onerous putting that bid package together is.
Hey, there's a lot smarter people than me that can come up with, with, you know, ways to reinvent government, but, you know, in my little pot of the world, I know that it would help us greatly to be able to increase the threshold.
Thank you, thank both of you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Representative Truitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a quick question, somewhat rhetorical, but in your engineering firm, just to state, when you do a project, require you to pay your engineers a certain amount of money per hour?
No, no, they do not.
Why would it be any different? Why, why do you think that is? I mean, why would we require that certain categories of workers be paid certain hourly rates and others not?
I guess they consider us professionals to be able to negotiate our rates, I, but I don't, I don't know, but-
If you underpaid your engineers, what would happen?
They'd leave.
Yeah, okay, that's all I need to know, thank you. Any other members? Again, again, I would like to thank you for your testimony, I'd like to thank the members of the committee, Chairman Keller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, appreciate it, and have a great rest of the evening.
I hate to say it, but I'll tell Chairman Segwell we didn't miss him that much, is that?
Maybe nobody will notice he's not here, maybe they'll think I'm him.